Alright, so I'll call the meeting to order at 7:14 PM, town of Wakefield Board of Appeals. I believe all members are in attendance. Why don't we just do a quick roll call, make sure everyone's here and the radio's still working. Jim McBane?
Yeah.
Chip Darbell?
He's got his mic off.
Uh oh, Chip, come on back. Joe Pride?
Yeah.
Tom Lucy?
Yep.
Mike Feely?
Yeah.
Greg McIntosh?
Here.
Alright, we know Chip's here, we'll get his audio back, and Amy Wall is excused, she has a conflict tonight. So with that, we will read the legal notice, Jim in Amy's absence, can you please take care of that for us now?
Consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open town meeting law and banning gatherings of more than ten people, this meeting will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to review or no and or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click on the following link. And this is under Zoom, it's eight seven eight six four six three two one two eight one. Password nine.
Jim, I don't think we have to read the password, I think we're good.
If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial up number. Please only use dial in or computer and not both, as audio feedback may distort the meeting. This meeting will be the audio and visual recorded. And one, continued hearings. Two, Matthew D Husky and Brooke A Husky, application for a determination and or finding with respect to the continuation, extension of a norm conforming use under Article nine, section nineteen dash fifty of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to add a front porch on an existing dwelling. The property is shown as map thirteen, lot parcel two thirty, twenty-three C of the assessors map, and is located at twenty-three Lake Street, Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Jim. Alright, so now I'm just sharing the agenda briefly, so the continued hearings we have this evening are at six ten Salem Street, thirty-seven Central Street, one oh one Cedar Street, twenty-five to twenty-nine Tuttle, Unit Three, and then a new hearing, as Jim just mentioned, on twenty-three Lake Street, plus a few other matters that we usually take up at the end. So with that, we will begin the meeting with our first continued hearing, case twenty-one dash twelve, thirteen and fourteen, six ten Salem Street, Wakefield LLC. That's six ten Salem Street. Right, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record attorney Brian McGrath, representing the applicant at six ten, six ten Salem Street. With me tonight is John Olgrin and also Peter Sandus is with us. Peter has taken over the project from an architectural perspective. And I think Paul Cagiano, our client, might be on here. I think Paul might be the six oh three number dialing in. But he's the principal of the entity that owns the property. We had an initial hearing with the board. And the board was not, to be straightforward, was not happy with the architectural aspects of the project. And also wanted to understand the site restraints from a wetlands protection situation. So what we'd like to accomplish tonight, I think maybe the best thing is, is to start with John Olgrin from Hayes to to kind of talk about the site, because that was something that the board said that they wanted to have a better understanding of the site in certain aspects of it, mainly the wetlands and how the wetlands affect the property. So if I, if I can, Mr. Chair, I'd like to pass it on to John, and then we can get to Peter with the architecture, because Peter's had an opportunity to now look at the site in conjunction with the area, and I think he's got some good ideas that he'd like to present to the board on an initial basis to see if we're headed in the right direction. So that's it. John, do you need to share the screen for John, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I enabled that for everybody, so everyone should be able to share their own and mute and unmute themselves, just FYI.
Anyone see that?
Yes.
Hey, in terms of kind of the wetlands resource areas, the kind of the constraints that are on this site, it's a little complicated, so bear with me. Essentially, we have boring vegetated wetland. There's a boring vegetated wetland, that's kind of the darker green that shows along the river. There's also a boring vegetated wetland towards the rear of the property. And Conservation Commission, generally like to see a twenty-five foot disturbed zone, which is this short dash blue line here and along here. Also on the site is riverfront area, so that's riverfront area that's associated with the Saugus River. There's two, kind of two areas, there's inner and outer repairing zones. The inner repairing zone is a hundred feet from the river, bank of the river, and that's this dash start line, that's a hundred, and then there's the two hundred, which is this other dash start line. Within the hundred foot, I, you're essentially limited in terms of disturbing that area. On this site, because there had been previous disturbance, we're allowed to do work within that hundred foot of the river just because it had been previously disturbed. And I put on here, there's kind of this tree line, this green, I mean, circle line. That tree line essentially designates the area that has been disturbed. So in terms of that hundred foot inner repairing zone, we're limited to this line as far as any, any other disturbance. There's also associated on the site is the hundred year flood elevation. That's shown as the blue line with a long and a dash, that area in there that's boring land subject to flooding. Any activity there would have to be compensated somewhere else on the site. And then the other constraint has to deal with the zoning bylaw, which is requires buildings to be set back at least fifty feet from any stream, which this river, Saugus River would qualify that, so that would be fifty feet from the banks. So, all that said, that kind of limited us, you know, basically to this area as far as where we could work and keep within the constraints of the resource area that are on and adjacent to this property.
Okay. Any questions on that, Mr. Chair? Would like us to move to the architectural with Peter?
I still have a couple of questions on site. It appears that along the driveway to the right, that we still have a curb cut in that road that goes into the side of a building? Is that true?
Yeah, there's an existing curb cut that's there.
So what are we doing with that?
The curb cut, it doesn't, it's actually not on this property, so not really under our control. The pavement that shows in that area would be removed and that would be landscape.
Can we try to, I know that Brian had raised the issue of it being a forty B back there previously, but can we try to get with the owners of that property and close that off, because that just looks strange?
Yes, we can try to do, we can try to, you know, figure that out.
Because that, that would give you enough opportunity to continue those trees along and to make it look more like contiguous part of the property.
John, can you run the cursor on the property line? It's kind of confusing.
It's right there.
This line right here.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay.
I mean, I guess worst case scenario, I'd like to see that curbed off or
Yeah.
closed off somehow, but, but there should be attention to that, because that just looks strange. Looks like an entrance underneath the building.
Yeah, it does. Chip, did you ever, like, when you said you had questions, was there something else?
That's pretty much the biggest one.
John, can you just restate what the small dotted blue line is? I'm sorry if I missed it, I may have been writing something.
The short, the, the small dot?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the, um, the twenty-five feet from the boring vegetated wetland, and that's the Conservation Commission likes to see that remain not disturbed.
Oh, because you already disturbed it, okay.
Yeah, in this area, in the bat, in the rear here, the pavement actually goes up, pretty much up to the wetlands. So in this area, we're actually, you know, removing some pavement, so we're allowed to kind of go and do some work in that area.
Okay, I think you stated up front, I just missed that. Okay, thank you.
John, can you walk us through the call tech system or the recharge system, whatever it is, up in the top part of that parking lot?
Yeah. Essentially, this, the infiltration system that is here underneath the parking lot is, will be connected to the roof trains. And it's designed to
Can you zoom in, maybe, just?
So this is basically designed to just, this infiltration system is designed solely to take care of the roof runoff. As far as the runoff from parking lot area, there's a catch basin here that's, that will collect that runoff. It's run through a storm scepter to basically treat the runoff, and then that's discharged out to a level spreader, and then eventually will make its way to the river.
And is that the only catch basin on the property?
Correct.
So, everything will pitch to that catch basin, nothing will come out onto the street?
Um, there is there is some of the, the front driveway that will discharge out, and then the front of this building does discharge out towards Salem Street.
The landscape area, but not the pavement, right?
Well, the, the beginning part is kind of a high point in here, so this will discharge out to Salem Street.
And that's allowed?
Yes. We took a look at comparing what's discharges out there in the current condition, and we actually decreased the amount of water that's going out to Salem Street.
Yeah, today, the whole front of the property is paved and
Right.
probably pitches and who knows where, yeah, because there's no curb ride, everyone just drove right up there, yeah.
Um, I also don't see any notes on type of curb or how you're addressing the area next to the concrete sidewalk. How that, how your landscaping is attaching to that, whether it's just going to be grassed in or what you're doing.
You mean out on Salem Street?
Well, you got, you got vertical granite curb along the street.
Yep.
Then you got a concrete sidewalk.
Yep.
Is there anything bordering the inside side of the sidewalk towards your property, or is it just going right into grass?
It's going right into grass.
Okay. And how, what's the treatment at the edge of the driveway? Do we have handicapped slope walks? What's, what's happening there?
Um, yeah, the driveway. This detail sheet is showing up to you?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so basically, this is kind of a detail of that driveway entrance and the the transition between the sidewalk and the driveway. So the sidewalk, the design will slope down slightly to the driveway opening, then slope back up and meet up with the sidewalk on the other side. The same with the granite curb will taper down with the driveway opening.
And then how is, how's the granite curb from the site attaching into all of this?
It would just attach to the, the back of the concrete sidewalk.
At, at the lowest point or up at the, where the slope starts or where? How is it?
Um, it would be up near where the slope starts, you know, the actual detail of it, it would probably, there may be a transition stone like this stone here, where it would slope up to get to the full six. I do.
And is the vertical granite curb note on one of the drawings somewhere?
Um, that's a good question.
I think the answer is no.
I thought I saw.
There's also no detail for it.
I thought the original site plan had proposed VGC.
Well, it does have, there is a detail for vertical granite curb.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Um, but you may be right, it may not actually on the site, you know, within the parking area, it may not call it out, we can, we can add that.
Right, that, as you well know, it should. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
John? John, what's the, what's the elevation at the generally common elevation at the stream versus the bottom of the drainage system? I'm just wondering how much infiltration there is, because that water's fairly high in relationship to the site, but I'm not sure how many feet or lack thereof there is.
Yeah, I mean, we did test holes out there and I don't know, I'd have to get back to you on an exact answer, but it, it was designed to, that the infiltration system, I think was at least two feet above the estimated seasonal high groundwater.
Right, I'd like some information on across, cross section, the cross section you got in there, what's, where's the, where is the groundwater currently? And where is the stream level in relationship to that? That you have, you have the information somewhere, can you provide it next meeting?
Yep.
The other thing, Brian, is the first sketch that was shown on, on the colored one, basically, we don't have copies of that. We got copies of the architecture the other day, but we don't have what's in front of us right now.
Okay.
I have a, I have a C one, but, well, maybe that's, maybe that's the one.
I think it's the one, John, you just put color there for the presentation.
This is just a rented up version of the C one.
December eleventh? What's the date on that?
Says ten nine twenty nineteen, but it's not, it's the updated site plan.
All right, let's make sure, let's make sure we have copies of that.
Okay, yes. Right again, just so we can include the hard copies in the file, and especially as we move along, if things evolve, but like to be able to stamp things as we're getting them as evidence, you know. So, hard copies to Gale, and we can stamp them. Thank you. All right, anything else, Jim? I think there were other questions.
I got a question.
Okay.
But John, that storm scepter system seems to leach in the hundred, like, past the hundred year storm section, is that okay or? Seems to be inside the hundred year zone there.
We did the analysis through the hundred year storm.
Well, it's okay that leaches into that area? I mean, if there's, if there's a big rainstorm, it's not gonna, technically wouldn't really go anywhere, right, because it'll be flooded? My.
The discharge?
Yeah. Right there, yep.
The hundred year flood?
It's, I was like.
Sixty-four. So it would be under some tailwater effect if the elevation of the river got up to that sixty-four.
All right, is that okay, I guess, my question?
Yeah, I mean, this, the drainage system and the design, you know, and going through the Conservation Commission process, this was, the drainage design was all reviewed by the, the engineering department through that process, and they have reviewed all the calculations that went along with that.
All right, yeah, it just seems strange to me, that's all.
All right, thanks, anyone else?
Yeah, I guess, Dave, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, Tom Lucy, uh, you know, given all the constraints, I guess I'd just like to hear some logic on why you think this massing is appropriate, and if not, the massing is, for me, it seems a little too much for this site. Yeah, that's a question for later, but while in the site plan, given all these constraints we're hearing about and some of these other questions, I wonder if it's just too much mass?
I, I think I think that might come in with the architecture, Mr. Lucy, so, you know, Peter can probably address that. You know, as far as this is unique, because this is a site that we're able to provide, actually, you know, a lot of times the density is determined, obviously, by the calculations, and then able to meet parking, to be able to make sure that you can meet the parking requirements. And we're not only meeting it, we're exceeding it by a pretty good amount. So I, I, I'll defer to Peter when he talks about the massing and, and makes the architectural presentation, that's okay.
Sure, if he can just, yeah, reference, you know, the, the footprint of the building and the massing, that would be great, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tom, anyone else at this time around the site in civil? Just to point out, as far as the, the site's ability, you know, forty, forty-five parking spaces are, are required, and we're actually in this site, we're providing fifty-six spaces. So, I mean, we could, we could lose some of the parking, we've got the ability to do that. You know, but we thought it fit nice to provide that extra parking, but we could, we could, we could create more green space and pull some of that stuff back by losing some of the spaces. But we'll see where we go after you have an opportunity to review the massing and determine the appropriateness of it. Okay. Anyone else?
Well, I would just like to add to that, that, you know, based on the lot area required for dwelling unit of twelve hundred square feet, under the zoning, thirty-seven units would be allowed, and we're proposing thirty units.
Yeah, and then, you know, John, I'll add to that a little bit, so just, you know, one of the goals that Paul Cagiano had was to keep the, you know, the elevation of the building down, so you know, sixty feet is allowed in the business district, and, and this, this building actually is pretty low, it's forty-three feet high at its highest point. So I think we've probably said enough on that, and we should probably hand it over to somebody that really knows what they're talking about in that regard, and Peter. Okay. I see a hand up, I will just state again for anyone who might be new, we're going to go through the presentation with the applicant and the board members, and then we'll open it up to public comments, so you can keep your hand up if you like, but just to let you know, we'll get to that. So Peter, are you going to take a screen?
Can I, am I able now to share my screen?
You should be able to grab it, yes.
Okay. And are you seeing it now?
Yes.
Okay, I, I think we can, we can begin by looking at the rendering of the building, just quickly, I'm going to just scroll down and then I'll, I'll come back. We, we tried to, we took the building and maintained that footprint that you saw before and that we just discussed with John. The massing is the same, it allows us to keep the parking, was provided. One change we did make is that in the far right-hand corner of the building, I removed the stairway in the front and moved it internally, so it's over here rather than where it was up here. That helped me create better units upstairs and also reduced big mass in the front of the building. We went back into the unit plans and brought all of the balconies that are provided internal rather than external. We broke the vertical, we broke the flatness of the building by bringing bays forward, either horizontal bays or angled bays. Took that to make it the building more traditional, or most Bostonian, I would take it with the angled bays especially. You see how the stairway moved in here, the stair provided up here, went all the way to the roof, we removed that, took that whole mass away. That shows well, I'm not seeing anything, that's not a good sign. Odd, are you seeing other coming in slowly? But I think this elevation shows how we, the massing, this section of the building, we were able to remove the stairway here and get more activated elevation, we enclosed the parking completely, although these are openings for ventilation and show a garage door, so we're trying to make that more like on parking on grade in a floor rather than a building that's raised with open parking under. We're suggesting that that would be brick, I'm going to go back to the rendering now. Why that's taking time to load, that's very strange. Are you seeing blank? There it is. So here's Salem Street, you can see the brick below, these openings are, are metal frames allowing air to flow in. Rectangular bays and angular bays, all of the decks are inset, this is plain siding above the brick, some type of limestone cap. Then it comes up to or a parapet where the decks are up on the fourth floor, we're proposing that the whole fourth floor would be seen metal, just like all of the roof systems on the bays will be standing seam metal. And I worked hard to bring that fourth floor in, reduce its size and mass up on that level. Also, was discussed that the elevation, as you enter into the project behind, was very long. It will also have all these bays that break it up, and I think that's going to help. You come down Salem Street and catch a glimpse of that. Also working more with trees up front, more landscaping to shade the parking, the building from the, from the street itself. I think the, the my opinion, the, the going with a more traditional design just helps the building look like it settles in more with surrounding buildings and timeframe, so it's kind of ended up with it.
All right, that's everything, Peter?
Yes.
Okay.
So, my opinion is, and I said this before, I think when people were asking whether in fact this building should be porch flipped, basically, so there was more mass on the street, is we've got existing buildings that are just beyond us here, and this one's it looks like about five stories, something like that, this is four, actually, the street level is three. And then we got the one that we've been dealing with just up the street on the other side, which I believe is four stories. So this forms a bit of a corridor, basically, but at the same time breaks it up, I think this is a lot better than where we were, at least architecturally. So this forms a bit of a corridor, basically, but at the same time breaks it up. I think this is a lot better than where we were, at least architecturally. And I still think that the footprint of this is the right footprint for this location. I would, you know, I might quibble a little bit as to cornice lines and stuff like that, but certainly pulling that top floor back. And making it dark, so it sort of disappears to some degree, I think helps. I would say the entrance needs some work, but that can, that's a minor piece compared to the rest. But. You know, I think this is the right direction personally.
I mean, I agreed, I think we, we're, I'm fighting the cornice a little bit as well, where it should come out, where it should go up, or maybe it stays up completely. I wondered what, I'm wondering what it would be like if you're living in one of those units and all your window views are broken. Above midway, that, that's why, that's what led me to drop it, but as I look at it, I'm not sure it's in the right spots or done.
Are they planning on, are they planning on any sort of decks out, out at the units?
There are some decks, there's decks on, up, right up in here and all, when it's raised is a deck, so there's a deck up in here, there's a deck here that's inset, there's one here that's inset.
Yeah, but your view, your view is to one twenty-eight, I'm not sure that's a great view.
Yes, that's true.
Basically, having the, having the, the cornice line basically up gives you a little more privacy in, in a deck area as well.
Correct, and I thought that the consistency between not having railings here, not having railings on any of these decks, it was kind of the same feel. You're, you're tucked down in there a little bit.
The one, the ones on the second and third floor, which are recessed, basically. I'm not sure what you do about drainage on those deck areas, since you don't have a railing, there's gonna be something happening there, I assume.
We actually, in the, in the, in the architect showed some scoppers, I don't think it carried through to the coming out. It didn't carry through to the rendering, but, but you're right, we have to, we have to look at that.
Then, then the question is, where do the scoppers dump?
Where do they go? Yes.
Yeah, yeah. But I like the, the idea of the square bays and the, and the slope bays, I think, work well to sort of break the surface up. The color works well as well. Materials? What's your thought? What's the thought on materials?
Oh, I'm sorry, so it's brick on the lower base, then the hardy plank siding up above, the bays would be our hardy plank as well.
Is that horizontal or vertical?
Horizontal.
Cornice is what?
In, in the lower corner, cornice was, I was thinking a limestone up, up here, truthfully, I don't think we got that far.
Well, that's my quick observation anyway, so far. I'd like to, I'd like to see all the other sides eventually, but, I mean. I suppose I can look at the rest of the architecture, so what you've got.
Yes.
Is it flat across the back?
It is, it's flat across the back.
But there's some sort of break that indicates an upper story and a lower story, at least, through the.
The, the brick carries all the way around, all, all sides of the building, the base, the base still happened and they're still inside of the balconies, that's happening. I didn't, but the facade is straight across.
And the cornice line runs around, breaking the, the upper floor with the, with the third floor.
That's correct, yes, yep.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jim. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'd like to, Jim mentioned it, but I think I'd like to just highlight it a little bit. I feel that the front entrance needs a lot of work, I think it still feels like it should have the word emergency room over it. So I would suggest in, in lieu, maybe have a parking space or two, a lot more landscaping, a lot more creativity. At the entrance, it seems just really stark, bland, nondescript to me.
Peter, can you go to the plan of that entry area?
Sure. Just that level, that's okay, right?
Yeah, that's the one.
It, I mean, it's just, you know, got a small. It just, to me, it's, it's a nothing entrance. And, and we're talking about thirty units, we're talking, you know. It, 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 it deserves more, in my opinion.
Well, there's another, there's another fact I think that needs to work into your, into that, is you're on the second floor, right? You're gonna wait for the elevator to go one floor, when in fact you could have had a staircase go to the second floor? And where is, where is parcel post dropped this stuff off? And where's your mail, where's your mail dropped off?
Yep, that, that's a, it's a good, good point, and I, and I, I don't disagree that that would be. That would be really nice if we could make the entrance get wider and have more glass, it'd be more prominent. I, I think that would be, that would be great.
Maybe it goes, maybe it goes up several stories, basically, the entrance is not just the canopy, but continues up with, in some way or other, to make it more of an architectural statement.
Right.
Maybe it's a glass elevator up a glass chute, I don't know, but something.
Something, yeah.
I'm, that's beyond me, as Jim well knows, but. To me, just have a concrete walkway and a double door just isn't enough. There needs to be, I would think, a lobby area, something, and it seems like in that corner, there's enough space to do it.
It's not very ceremonial.
Right. Okay.
Alright, any other board members at this time? Comments or questions?
Yeah, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I would just add that I, I agree with the sentiment that. I appreciate the idea to add more parking, but less impervious surface, more landscaping, a better entrance. I, I guess no one else agrees, but I think the footprint of the building is too big for this site, but. I'm not gonna belabor that point. So I agree with what I just heard about, less parking, as long as you're meeting your minimums. And more landscaping at the front, so when you drive by the building. And I do appreciate the efforts to break down the building horizontally, vertically. But I think we can do better out front there. You, you know, the only thing I'm, I'm thinking about when you, when you mentioned parking is, unlike other locations that we dealt with. Guest parking's gonna, is a problem if you get too many guests, and they're gonna be out in the street, or they're gonna be up a block or so down a side street. So cutting parking, to me, causes a different problem, I guess. Even though as much as I'd like to see more landscaping, I'm not sure that cutting back on. On the amount of parking they're providing, basically, given that they are already providing more than they need to. Is a wise thing.
It's Greg, I don't want Tom to think he's the only one that thinks that this might be too large of a, of a footprint for this area, I think we just heard a lot about architecture and. And, but I don't, you know, I think his question earlier was about massing, and I don't know if I've heard anything about that, other than, you know, Brian and someone earlier saying, you know, work with the Conservation Commission, but. I think the, the response to that answer wasn't about massing. You know, I think we heard earlier that the Conservation Commission, or the, the restraints. Really forced the footprint on this building, but the restraints to me seem, I think in the back of the building, it was, you know, within the twenty-five foot mark of the, of the. The land in the back, I forget exactly which line it was, but it seems like, you know. It could even be smaller, if we're actually really saying that the. The Conservation Commission restraints are what, what are forcing. To be the size anyway, so, I think I'm with Tom, I think it's just getting a little bit too forced into the site.
One of the, one of the things that would help me to the whole massing issue would be to really understand the buildings all around it. The amount of square footage they're taking up and how this fits in with all of them, I, I mean, I know we've talked a little bit. About stories, but I think it would be good to, as we've asked for many times. A real massing study to say, this building on this amount of square footage. Is less than the buildings next to it, or is greater than the buildings next to it. And the height differentials and all of that.
I, I agree, Chip, I'm always one that asks for context, but what I would add to this site that's different from the other sites is, is the presence of the river. Is the presence of the wetlands behind, so, given the size of the parcel, the amount. It's kind of like when the, the folks came in at the top of the lake, they presented this huge parcel, well, you can only develop on a certain portion of that parcel, right? Because of the restrictions and the constraints of the wetlands, so to compare units, number of units per. Parcel, you, you really have to look at the, the, the amount of land on the parcel that can be developed on. And the amount of units that are on it, as opposed to. Looking at the whole parcel and saying, well, you can't develop on that anyway, so it, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, but. I agree, it would be great to see some context and understand the heights. And some of the massing of the buildings around it, and, and again, it can just be Google, I don't wanna. Force the applicant to, to spend a bazillion dollars, it, it can be done fairly easily, I think. Brian, you've represented clients that have done that for us, and it's been very helpful. Well, Peter's, Peter's done this on Water Street, if you remember, down by the liquor store and the car wash. Yeah, perfect, exactly, Jim.
Brian or Peter, is that something we could, we could do? Okay. We'd be hap, we'd be happy to do that. Okay. It sounds like it'll help the board members, again, just to better understand the. The context, do you also have a, an existing, I'm sorry, do you have an existing conditions sheet? That would be John, John, can you bring that up, please? Oh, okay. Do you have to stop sharing?
Yeah, I stopped here, okay.
Just because I know it's a lower building, I don't know if it's considered one or two stories. But just curious footprint to footprint, like comparing. And there's a lot more parking lot, obviously, off, around it, but. Yeah. Is Johnny control? Yep, yeah, we're seeing it. Oh, you, you're seeing the existing conditions?
And that's, this is, this is the existing conditions plan for the site, this is the existing rental built equipment building. And the pavement that goes around and behind. It doesn't show anymore as far as, you know, beyond, you know, abutting building.
Right, so the building's, whatever, half a third. Just in terms of square, you know, for the footprint on the ground. There's just a lot of parking lot around it, right? I thought it might have been bigger, I just wanted to see the, I thought it might have been deeper, but I guess it really isn't.
Well, the other, the other question that this jumps out and shows me is that the four existing large trees along the right side. Between the driveway and the building, they show them staying. However.
It didn't happen.
I, I, I'd like to know how, I mean, even the canopy goes into the building, I think. So how are those being saved? I don't need to answer tonight, but, you know, let's, let's get a real. Assessment of what can and can't happen on the site, which also goes to. The massing and. You know, how much of it's gonna look new versus old and hidden and not hidden, that type of thing.
Hidden from the building behind it, too, I think no one's really discussed that, there is a building behind there, too, so.
The forty-B, the project, the development behind, yes, yes.
I, I think its height is either equal to or greater than, but that's one of the things that will be talked about when they show us. Everything around it. Context.
Yep, those, those trees on the LA drawing that we got, hard copies of, are in the abutis property.
I know, but we're, we're, they're asking to build the building almost. Right up to that line, so.
Well, that, that, it really isn't, it's probably. Oh, it's probably.
Six, six feet off of the property line.
Yeah, how many feet?
Six, six feet.
Right, so, but you're disturbing under the canopy of the, I, I just wanna know how those trees are being treated. If you're disturbing under the canopy, that means you're disturbing the root balls.
The system, yeah, yeah, okay, maybe as part of the landscape presentation or.
Yeah.
And. Which will have all those details, but, okay. Anything else on either the site or architectural board members? Okay, so. Sounds like we'll, we'll need a little more information before we move off this topic and perhaps get into other areas like landscaping and. And lighting and all the rest, right? So if there's nothing else, Brian, this was it for your presentation this evening, right? Correct. Okay, so I'm going to now. Go back to the participant view. And open it up to public testimony. Just gonna get back to the participant list. There we go. Okay. Alright, so I think it was Erin Cook, let her hand up before, I don't see it up, Erin.
Hi.
Hi.
I can put the hand up if you want, I want my face.
That would be great, and if you could just state your name and address for the record.
That is fine, or on Zooms, anything goes, I guess. So I live over in Jessica Lane.
Can you just state your name and address for the record, please?
So it's Erin Cook.
Address?
Six, I heard him, six Jessica Lane.
Okay, thank you.
So I live in the neighborhood over, it's like the last neighborhood right next to the development in question. I guess some two concerns I really have is traffic. Obviously, there's a lot going on in the area between the UPS. Other buildings, the new development, and I know there's been an issue with parking, as you were discussing earlier. Um, we get a lot of that, especially on Walton Street, so that's something that is a concern for my family, and I know neighbors and stuff like that. Police and fire, et cetera, and the second thing is the flooding. Especially bad, like rainstorms, especially where that driveway was in that diagram, it just gets very flooded. So those are the two kind of things I'm worried about.
Okay, so we'll definitely get into traffic and parking, I think the applicant already did a study, we'll get a peer review, so we, we will definitely get into those details and. Can ask for other questions once you hear more of that. As far as flooding, I know, John, you did cover that, some of that in the site, in terms of trying to control the runoff and, and mitigate. But she's referring to the other area, back towards Wakefield, right?
Towards Wakefield, yeah.
I mean, there's that.
Yeah. It gets very flooded in that area, so. Um, and then the traffic.
Yep. But John, was the flooding, I mean, do we, was that part of the study going back in that direction, or was it more towards the back of the site and the river?
Well, as I say, typically, what we would do is look at the existing conditions and the proposed. And we're tasked with basically mitigating, we're trying to match the existing or improving. In terms of runoff from the site, which we submitted a drainage study showing that in the proposed condition, there'll be less surface runoff. Coming off of the site. I'm very familiar with the flooding that you're talking about, my office is directly across the street from this. And several times when the flooding doesn't occur, it's because those catch basins, for whatever reason, seem to. Get clogged with leaves very badly, so some of the flooding occurs. Even not on a overly intense storm. But there is, there is flooding that occurs just based to the river, it's not that the river is back, going back. Of flooding over Salem Street, again, it's, it's a drainage system from Salem Street discharging into the Saugus River. Again, nothing that we're doing here. As I said, we're, we're looking to, for the most part, we're improving the surface runoff from the site. Out to Salem Street and also to the river itself.
Thanks, John. This cook was that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, there's one more person in the house before I go back on mute, I'm just grabbing, hold on.
Hi, one of my, Janine Cook, six Jessica Lane.
Okay.
Okay, one of my main concerns is, um, as, I'm sure you're aware of UPS, when the UPS drivers leave Kimball Lane. You know, back in the day, they got. They were told that. they were told that they could only take a left to go through Wakefield using Wakeville Streets and that they couldn't go to the right to access one twenty eight, Route One or anywhere else. And the amount of traffic that, especially with the holiday season coming up, the amount of traffic that comes out of there, it's to the point that they have a police detail there. So now we have these trucks taking lefts because they can't take a right and go through Linfield. We have definitely one new complex that's going in where CrossFit was, and now this is a potential second one. I, I think it's hard to determine how many more people would be accessing the streets, but it's a significant amount. And then on a good day, once hopefully this is all behind us, we've got to contend with school buses. I mean, kids wait there for the school bus in the end of Walton Street. The traffic is crazy. It, it's, it's like a caravan. You cannot get out of the neighborhood. You know, if the UPS were allowed to take a right, that might lessen the traffic. But I don't think that's going to ever happen, but at this point, it's ridiculous. I was speaking to some neighbors on Walton Street and there were concerns because last year fire trucks were unable to get up Walton Street because cars were both parked on both sides of the street. And they came from the existing building that's near there now, the apartment building, the existing building. So what's going to happen to people in this new building if this goes through? Have nowhere to park. They're not going to park in that street. I can't imagine that they would approve parking you know, in front of this new building. So what are they going to go down Walton? I mean, what do you wait for a fire or someone to get hurt? Before you say enough, you can't park down there? As it was, they were parking on the end of the street and I went to the town council and asked them, I petitioned to have a sign put up so they couldn't park to the corner. So now there is a sign, so they have to park beyond the entrance of that little salon that's on the corner. But that still is tough. The, the visibility is not good. There are kids that go on bikes. It's, it's an accident waiting to happen. Maybe if you guys can turn things around, let UPS go to the right instead of the, the left, that will lessen it, but I know, and you know, that ain't happening. So, you know, again, that's my concern.
Okay. Well, again, okay, all again, when we get into traffic in more detail, we'll hear the details of their study and, and we can.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can we ask traffic advisory to find, I've heard that that's a folklore and a myth that UPS can't turn right? I've just heard it. I have no proof one way or the other. Can we ask traffic to find out once and for all if that's a truth or just a folklore? I know they don't, but my understanding when that was permitted is it's never in writing or anything else.
Oh, it, I can give some information on that, Mr. Chair. Okay, briefly, might, might be helpful. Because we're not talking about traffic tonight, but.
No, when we do.
But, you know, I mean, Mrs. Cook brings up a, a, a real relevant issue with, with UPS and it's been kind of a thorn in everybody's side down there. And it might, the board might remember that this came up when you were permitting the sign for Market Street years ago and to refresh your memory. And it's not folklore. There's a, there was a, when they issued the permit for that building, they put a condition in there that left-hand turn only. And, and I think that your board's payback was with Market Street that there was, you have a condition on that, that there's no advertising for any of the tenants up there that advertise exit forty two. Everything has to be exit forty three. And, and so your, your board put that condition when they wanted a sign and to make sure there was no, you know, that people would just be directed off of one twenty eight for Market Street to go, go through this area. But I can pull that information again, but I'm pretty sure that there, there is actually a decision that was issued by one of the Linfield boards that, that makes that a requirement.
Is that enforceable to make a one town take a hundred percent of the burden?
Yeah, again. Well, well, if we can dig it up, I know I saw it too, when I attended a Linfield meeting where they talked about.
That's right, Mr. Chair, you did. I remember, I remember this whole thing.
Yeah, yeah. So, but again, I want to keep it on the rails. We're really not diving on parking tonight. If we can dig up that, just to kind of confirm, I, I'm pretty sure I've seen that condition way back. I just, I don't have it handy, but if we can confirm that and then maybe get into it as part of the traffic analysis, we can raise it then.
And have, have they done a traffic study yet?
Yes, yes. We've actually.
Traffic advisory?
We have.
Yes. And have they issued a report to us?
They have, yes.
Do we have that?
We got it.
Did I just miss it?
Yeah. Yeah, because the last meeting was continued, right, Brian? So. Let's see. Yeah, so we got a letter from Lieutenant Joseph Anderson as the POC Chair covering three projects, five eighty one, five eighty six Salem, six ten Salem and two hundred Quinton Parkway, which was again, not even applied for, but it's sort of a preempt. They were asked to kind of consider the study area, so it wasn't really a final analysis, but we do have that. What we may want to do is, is revisit parking and perhaps have them attend, which we've done before. So that they can, if there's any questions, they can represent their findings and recommendations relative to the applicant's study.
Yeah, and we're happy, you know, you know, don't forget, we, you know, my client had a comprehensive traffic study done, so we're happy to have our traffic consultant attend a hearing to, to give his thoughts to your board and the neighbors on, you know, some of the stuff that's being raised.
All right, well, we have one meeting in November. We might, we might want to plan it for that because that might be a hurdle we have to get over. Because that might bring us back to massing if the feeling is the traffic is going to be an issue, then that affects how many units and how many cars and how many, you know, entries and exits and all of that, so.
In, in our package, we have a, a July twentieth, two thousand twenty, uh, traffic impact, uh, report. But as you say, we, we're just now getting the response from traffic, PAC.
Yeah. And again, to, to dive into the details, I think we should have both representatives here. Yes, they're the, they're the professionals and can answer the, the questions that are likely to arise, so. So I would put that on perhaps the, the agenda for the November meeting. We'll see before we continue this, this evening, what our sort of next steps are with traffic.
Sure.
Actually landscaping might be two areas we're going after and comebacks on this architecture. Um, I see a couple more hands up. Why don't we keep going there? Uh, Bronwyn, I think your hand was up next, and then I see Sue. You don't have to keep it up the entire time.
Yes, hi. Thank you. Bronwyn Dollop will be eight Cyrus Street. Thank you for, for this information. My, my first question is, um, when I read the agenda, it does say that it's, it's asking for relief for the required off-street parking, but then someone noted that there was more parking than is required. What's correct of that?
Brian, can you speak to that? I mean.
Yes, so we, we apply for that, right, because you're hearing now that there might be a decrease in parking depending, so you, you never know what direction it's going to go when the final project. So we, we apply for relief that we anticipate that we might need as the, as the hearing in the project evolves. But right now, we do not, we do, we will not need any relief unless there's a decrease, and then we, we've applied for that and have the opportunity to have the board consider it. So it's a good question, and that's the answer.
Okay, uh, m- mister, mister chairman, why would there be a decrease?
If we were determined today that we thought the build, as you heard some of the concerns tonight, the building needed to get smaller and therefore there wasn't as much parking required. Um, or they, um, I don't know, Brian, I mean, there are probably other scenarios you.
Yeah, well, I mean, that also includes like aisle widths and landscape buffers, so, you know, maybe the building gets moved and it has an effect on an aisleway and a setback and so, so, you know, that just doesn't, that relief that's requested just does not, is not limited to just the number of parking spaces. It's, it's, it's also related to driveway widths, access points, setbacks from buildings and lot lines for parking spaces. So, you know, like one of the requirements is all parking spaces have to be seven and a half feet from a property perhaps. Uh, the board decides that they want to move some parking spaces over within that area and, and then you would need that relief. So it, it really gives.
At this time, at this time, though, there's no relief being requested.
Correct.
Oh, okay, that, that clears that. So it's a fluid situation. I, I appreciate that. Um, and I know that traffic will be discussed at, in detail later on, but I, I did want to say in conjunction with the, the project that's going forward at five eighty one to five eighty three Salem, uh, near the CrossFit location. You know, you're looking at a possibility of, you know, a hundred cars, maybe more, or, you know, give or take being added to this corridor. That's substantial. Um, and I agree with the other people who spoke about the, um, the traffic and the congestion in that area is, um, it's bad already. So, uh, you know, keeping that in mind is paramount, of course. I, I was very pleased to hear Mr. Bain speak to the cumulative effect in, in that corridor, which I think is something that tends to get overlooked when, when a specific project such as this or, or any other comes forward because you're, you know, hyper-focused on, on one particular thing. You know, th- this corridor is rapidly becoming urbanized and, and so therefore I was, I was very glad to hear a couple of other people speak to the mass. Before we get into color and, and, you know, whether the bricks are horizontal or whatever, or whether there's balconies, I, I think that, that, that appearance must always come second to mass, to size. The existing buildings that are there are, are, are quite tall, quite, um, uh, uh, kind of overwhelming. They do have some trees in the front, which is mitigating, which I think is very important. The rendering does not have any mature trees in the front, which would also mitigate light trespass, which I think is going to be a major problem with this building. So I hope that the light trespass is considered. And, um, uh, let's see. Uh, so I, I think sometimes that the, but, but cre- you, you're creating a problem here with size and mass, and then you're spending weeks to try to mitigate it. So my feeling is if you address the mass first, a lot of the problems will be diminished and be a lot less work and worry for everyone else and result in, in a much safer and more attractive feature. Okay. Technical question for, or suggestion actually, for, for Mr. Halffield. When you're submitting the agendas for your meetings, can you please submit the original and not a copy? Because that way the Zoom link remains viable. When a copy is submitted, the Zoom link no longer engages on the agenda. So just a little, makes it easier for people to join the meeting. If you could just click on that agenda's, uh, link and you, you get taken right to the meeting.
You saying when they're posted on the town's website?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Sherry, Sherry knows all about it and she's, she, she and I have been trying to figure out why, why that doesn't work. And it's a technical thing, so just, I thought I'd mention it while I had your ear. Thank you.
Okay, and Gail, our secretary's here.
Right, it doesn't have, yeah, other people posted and it does depend on how they post it, who posted.
That's right, how it's posted exactly right.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Webmore, I think you were next.
Hi, Susan Webmore, twelve Sunset Drive. Um, I've been down this road with, with development all along Salem Street. I've lived here at, for thirty-four years. My first, and I appreciate the Zoom allowing to see everything. I'm just learning. I knew that there was an apartment building intended. This is the first time I attended a meeting. Sorry, I missed the other ones. So I'm trying to absorb all the information at once. Um, my first reaction is that it does seem to me that the footprint is too large for the area that we're talking about, in my opinion. Um, especially my, my first concern always is the river and conservation. So the borders being right along those edges is very concerning to me. On Sunset Drive, if you're not aware, um, my yard, after my yard is the, after the fence is the river. And, you know, the river's been high, the, the river's been low. It's always high now. And I, I know that tech, I don't know all the technicalities, but I know that all construction, all taking away land, putting, you know, surfaces, that all makes a difference. But it's, it's, it's not going lower, so that is always my concern. And to see a project start right to the edges of all those things. Um, I know the hundred-year storm, when I moved here in nineteen eighty-six, it was like, nah, who cares? Hundred years, we're all going to be gone. I, I've seen a number of hundred-year storms in my time here and what has happened. So that's my first concern. So I would like to see that more addressed. Also, the whole drainage, I didn't quite get, understand all that. It seemed very minimal for that size building, seeing where it is and seeing how that used to be a very viable building until it started kind of sinking and cracking and going into the world. So that's my first concern. My second would be obviously the traffic. I'm not, you know, and that we're getting into that because let me just tell you from someone who lives on one twenty-eight and saw no lights on Salem Street and the mass of traffic there is now. Up until recently, um, since everything's been shut down in March, if anything was done during there, during those times, there was no traffic. There was no, a lot, not a lot of traffic on Salem Street because there was not a lot of traffic on one twenty-eight. So I, I would love to see a more real-time situation when we get into that because, um, it, you know, it is tough. Uh, again, the parking overflow from apartments, ours neighborhood, as everyone on the board would know, there's only one entrance in and out of the hundred or so homes that live in this neighborhood of Renee Drive, Sunset Drive, Old Colony, Walton Street and Jessica Lane. So that, that's why traffic is a huge concern to us, that we really can't get out of our street or into our street. Um, as a matter of fact, about a month ago, a truck decided to try to pull down our neighborhood and pulled down a number of wires and really blocked entrance or exit to our neighborhood for almost two hours. So, and I have pictures of that. That was, that was a first. I'm hoping it's going to be the last that kind of thing ever happens. Um, so that is definitely something that needs to be addressed. So I, I think the, the beginning architectures of the building looks, looks very pretty. Um, I know that a lot of work in that neighborhood, they do do a lot of landscape along Salem Street, but that, you know, so looking good is going to be great. And I, I am very convinced that this group always does that. But I am concerned with the size. I think it could be smaller and I am concerned with conservation and traffic issues. So that's it. So I'll, I'll continue with my watching of this. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
It is very interesting, though, to her comment that, given COVID and like, this study was done in July. So what was the traffic in July when the study was done? I mean, it's not done before COVID, it's done in the middle of COVID. And maybe it's getting a little denser down there right now, but July had some effect on things.
Market Street wasn't open. There was no schools. There was, nobody was going to work on one twenty-eight. So it was quite different, yes.
It's an interesting comment. Needs to be taken into account.
Excuse me, can I speak to that?
Hey, John.
The traffic assessment looked at the existing conditions, basically the, um, you know, the existing store building that was there, the traffic generation from that and comparing it to the traffic generation for the thirty-unit multifamily. Um, it also took a look at, uh, stopping site distance, so basically site distance to entering and exiting the site. It did not go, get into traffic counts and it also took into consideration speeds, which we actually did out there. And those speeds obviously were the fact that it was less traffic, speeds were higher than, you know, potentially it could be. You know, there's a lot of talk about the traffic out there and, uh, as I said, my office is directly across the street from this and I don't deny that there are times that, um, it does take, take some time to get out onto Salem Street. But I would say that for the most part, those happen when traffic is backed up on one twenty-eight. That's when you generally tend to see that happen.
Yeah, but there's no, but there's no, what you're. Yeah, but there's no but there's no what you're implying. There was no count done on the street.
No, there was no count done on the street.
Yeah, I mean, kind of goes against the what you want to know.
I don't know. I think you got to you got to refer to your traffic consultant because the town has an expert that that reviews this and this standard traffic things. And, you know, one of the things that I'll say on this is, you know, this whole street, you're seeing it develop, and you're probably going to see more because, you know, you look at this building, it's business owned, it's going to get redeveloped. And usually residential use is the lowest traffic impact that you could put. Because at peak hours where everybody's concerned, you're saying you can't get out in the morning or at night, you know, put an office building there and fill it up and and people trying to get to work at eight in the morning and leave at five. You're gonna have a real jam. When it's a residential use, people trickle out, they work different shifts. So historically, my experience with these, every traffic consultant will tell you that if you're going to build a building like this compared to what else is going to go there, and something's going there. It's a business zone. Look at the property now. It's a disaster. And it's 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 in the business district that it's probably the least impact that you could have in the area.
Well, let's hear from them.
I'm sorry?
Let's hear from them.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. But I but I will contact them. But again, if this is something that we're going to consider at the next hearing, I'll reach out to Lieutenant Anderson and and raise these couple of points, especially when the study was done and considering actual traffic counts. So just additional points for them to consider and perhaps offer opinions on because I don't see them specifically called out in their letter. So, okay. Any more hands up? I do not see them. Anyone waving? Some folks are not sharing their video. So if you're waving, we don't see it. Going once. Twice. Okay, so again, for the evening, this will continue, perhaps for several more meetings. We'll get into different aspects. There'll be other opportunities for public input. But for now, for this evening, I will close it to public testimony. Back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that we do mass and traffic for the next meeting. Until we get through those hurdles, doesn't make any sense to work on much more.
Okay.
In my opinion, my humble opinion. And landscaping could be added to that as well in kind of a mass, you know, how are they the trees, all of that? How are how are they going to handle? Handle that?
Board members, you generally agree? Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, Brian. Yeah, that's fine. You know, I I think we appreciate all the feedback from the board and the public tonight. I think, you know, we we listen and, you know, a lot of good information and testimony was provided. We appreciate that. So we'll be prepared for that next meeting on those subject matters. Okay. And that is November eighteenth. Again, due to the holiday, we would normally be using second and fourth Wednesdays. But typically, November, December, we have one hearing. Again, if folks are new to this, haven't attended too many meetings. So that meeting will be November eighteenth.
I move that we continue this to November eighteenth.
Second. Thank you, Joe. Any discussion? All favor Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Hi.
Greg? Excuse me.
Yes.
And Tom?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. So thank you for the presentation this evening and for the public testimony. We will hear this application again on November eighteenth. Thank you. Thank you.
Was that to me?
No, that's my dog.
Oh, I figured you were telling me.
No.
Damn.
Likes to jump on my lap. I have the box of files faithfully delivered by Gail. I just got to get the next file out here. Okay. Next application, continued hearing, twenty-one dash fifteen. Brian? I'm sorry, Fennec Chetty?
Okay.
Thank you. Thirty-seven Central Street. Great. May I may I stop, Mr. Chair? Yes, sorry, Brian. Yes, whenever you're ready. Thank you. For the record, Brian McGrail, representing Brian Fennec Chetty, thirty-seven Central Chief Street. This is the second hearing before the board. Mr. Fennec Chetty is looking to be able to construct a detached garage in single bay garage on his property on Central Street, seeking a variance under Article ten, section one ninety-six of the bylaw in section one ninety dash thirty-one C five and table two. We made a pretty detailed presentation. And just to refresh the board's memory at that hearing, we went over detail. We kind of walked up and down the street through Zoom to give an idea of the setting and how how different folks are impacted and how the garage will fit on the property. And one of one of Brian's neighbors, Sharon Sariello, had some concerns. And Sharon is convenient, I think, just right next to the Fennec Chetty's on the Zoom. And so the board asked Brian to see if there's a way that he could kind of shrink the the building down because Miss Sariello had some concerns with open area in the back, I believe, of her property. And certainly, she can speak for herself. But that was kind of the direction of the board. And Mr. McBain offered stated that his his garage was kind of similar down the street evidently to what was being proposed here. He invited Miss Sariello and Mr. Fennec Chetty to take a look at, you know, his his garages to get a a scope or an idea of what it might look like. He thought it would be helpful. And I think they both took advantage of that opportunity. So since that meeting, we've had an opportunity to do some revisions on this, and we'd like to present those to the board. I believe that Brian and Judy spoke a little bit with Mrs. Sariello. I don't know how much in detail they got, but they they did have a little bit of a discussion, and certainly they can both speak for themselves. So with that said, Mr. Chair, if I do I have control, if I may?
You should.
Great. So probably the first thing I think to probably do would be to bring up the original site plan so everybody can get a trying to rotate it. There we go. Okay. Yeah, so this is, this was twenty-four by eighteen wide. So this is, just so everyone can get perspective, this is a Sariello's property in the back. We're not seeing it, Brian. We're seeing. Oh, not yet?
Thank you.
Sorry. Let me try. Hold on. Thank you. Now? It says, yes, now. Great. Sorry about that. Great. So so this is, this was the original site plan that was proposed in the twenty-four by eighteen garage. And, you know, basically, this is a Sariello's property in the back. And the concern is, you know, having some breathing space here. So just to give you that scope, you can see the distances here and the size, again, twenty-four by eighteen. And we have some photographs I'm going to bring up at a certain point that, you know, Brian will be able to kind of explain, you know, what's going on. And I think what you're going to see when we adjust this site plan, he's really trying to tuck the new garage back more in this corner and get it away from this area. So kind of because it's kind of a buffer area over here that he's seeking to hide it in now. So that's that. Let me see. I'm going to bring up the architectural, the original architectural plan. Okay. Okay. So this was the original architectural plan that was submitted with the windows and, you know, and and please remember that the second story is designated for storage only, so there's no ability or desire to finish that. And these are just the different sides and elevations. So I just thought that that would be helpful to give you some perspective. And then we can go to what's being proposed now. I think what I'm going to do on this, it's probably better that I show you the revised architectural before the site plan, so you can get some context on how the building's been changed. Then you'll see how it fits in. So this is a revised architectural. The building has been. Brian. Sorry about that. You get that? We're seeing the plot plan again. Yeah, that's what I want to bring up. I decided to bring that up because it.
This is the new one, I think.
This is a new one. Yeah, this is this is a revised plan. And what what he's done, he's actually put it closer to kind of tuck it in this corner. But he's shrunk in the the width of it down to sixteen and made it a little bit longer. You know, to kind of to kind of take less of an area in the back by a couple of feet. And and push that back and pushed it away. And then when I get to the photographs, I think that's going to be helpful because then Brian can just remember this area in the back. Because then you'll be able to get an idea of what's actually back here as far as, you know, how it affects the other property. So. Okay. Hang on one second. Apologize, we just have a little problem here. I'm getting there. Hang on. Hey. I didn't fall asleep. Think this will do it. Oh, I'm not a computer science major. Okay, here we go. Okay. Sorry about that. Oh. Okay, can you see that? Yes. Yeah, great. So this this shows you the garage, which has been narrowed. And what he's done because of the narrowing, he's put a he's proposing to put a dormo on this side with no windows on it, just to get some space up there for his storage. I think another thing that's important to note that this garage is only twenty-one feet, twenty, say twenty-two feet high, which is pretty pretty short in the scope of things. So I'm happy to stay in one spot, but that's kind of the elevation. And then what I'm going to do, Brian, if it's okay with you, I'm going to stop bringing those photos up, Brian, you can maybe once I bring them up, give a little description of what's going on. Is that okay?
Yeah, you just go down on this so we can see the lower.
Yeah.
I just wanted to point out, this is the side that would be facing my house or the left side of the building, obviously. It says left elevation. And I just want to explain this to you. What I did here, this ground here behind on the left side of that door is actually about fourteen to sixteen inches higher than existing. That's the existing level of the ground. From the back corner of the garage all the way to the rear in the right elevation, that will be dropping down into the ground to meet the level of her backyard. So right now, my backyard is approximately fourteen to sixteen inches above where her background, her rear elevation is of her ground. Am I making sense?
Your grade's above hers. Okay.
Yes. So I just want to know, that's also bringing the.
We're going to bring the grade down so that it's even with her. So we also, we dropped the level, the elevation of the garage. We're also going to drop the elevation of the
The height will come down.
Yard so that the whole thing is coming down. So it's not going to be as high as it was in the original proposal.
So. Yeah, right here.
It's not going to be on the front side, it's going to be twenty foot above.
Yeah, twenty-one ten, it says.
Right. What I'm saying is back here, it's not, you know.
Back in this area.
Yeah, correct. This isn't, this is really fourteen to sixteen inches lower than that twenty, whatever the height is there. That's all I'm trying to explain.
Okay.
And you can see that. And when he shows you some pictures I took, I marked that. I put a stake in there and marked it so you get an idea of what what I meant.
And what's the height of your current garage?
I don't have a current garage.
You don't have a current garage. Total new structure.
Correct, detached garage.
Okay. And as we covered at the first meeting, it's it's technically, it would be in the side yard, which is why they would need the variance from that. That's right.
It was in the side yard, yes.
They're proposing it to be enough of a setback from the lot line, but because it's in the side yard versus the rear yard.
Right.
It protrudes into the side years. Side yard, yes, correct.
So let me stop bringing up some of these pictures, Brian, if you can help, because you're going to be familiar. Okay. Is the first set.
This is the first. This is the day I purchased the house, the top picture. That's what that area looked like. The picture below is probably after I passed. The first week or two, I started cutting all the brush and everything out of there. And I'm just trying to give you an idea of what it was when I bought it, bought and the work I've been doing here, basically. You can show the next two, just to give you an understanding of what it was and where it's going to.
Okay. Okay.
Now, this would be standing with a garage, you'd be looking to my neighbor to the right. And that's looking to the left. That's the old part of one addition that that was removed when I put my massive suite on. So that building is no longer there on the left.
Just this this piece?
Yes, correct.
Yeah. And is this where?
Yeah, today.
How about this area, Brian, if you could define that area down the wall?
Yes, I have a picture of that, but those trees are all gone now.
Yeah. And where is that on the property?
That's where the garage is going.
That's what I thought. So you can kind of see how the grade goes up there, right?
Oh, yeah. I brought that grave down a little bit. You can see all the rocks and stuff over the left that were piled in there and stuff and boulders and.
Okay. Next one. Okay. This is your backyard, Brian.
This is looking right behind the old, the old house. This, that's her old fence. That's my old house there. That's what I cleaned out. There's before, there's after. The reason that was all pulled down like that, you can see on both the fence and the house, I'll hide the dirt and overgrowth and everything was. So the reason I had to pull that all down was so the house could breathe again. I didn't rip this addition off until three years ago, four years ago, I think. So I just.
Do you have any pictures of today's house and today's fence?
Okay. Read my mind, Chip. Yeah. Let's move it along.
Now, there's my truck in the driveway. Where the garage will go, there's the existing part, the pod that I have in the yard. And this is the others, this is looking out my back door on my porch towards her house. So that fence coming across there stops there, the garage, I don't know, I think it's probably another 10 foot to the garage.
Past the pod.
Past the pod. And then the garage would be, and then you have two more pitches, two more pitches, right? Or one more?
Yeah, one more, one more coming up. There they are.
Okay, so this is the stone wall going on my property line that I'd be taking down the 14 to 16 inches. I sort of marked it on this. So the finished grade will be below that line. So. And then, you know, you got the foundation and then the top of foundation, obviously the floor would be eight inches below the top of foundation. But anyways, that's how far it would be coming down. Instead of starting up here, obviously, it would be starting down there. That would help both neighbors out actually.
Okay, yeah.
Was just looking right down the fence line, basically.
Yeah. And then. The one thing I wanted to point out. Let me just find this one second. Here we go. So, you know, when you look at, you know, you saw the, it's probably, we just, let me just. I'm just going to bring this original site plan up just for context, just to show you what, what I'm going to kind of refer to. So this, this just shows you, you know, in the, this is where it's basically being proposed. Again, this is the old one, so it's, it's getting skinnier, but. There's quite a bit of run back here, you know, for, because Brian does need, you know, storage. And I think at the end of the day, you know, for everybody, including the neighborhood and aesthetics, you know, what he's proposing. In asking for a lease, you know, might be better than what actually could be done. By right, because. It's not a garage which, which he wants. But. You know, under the accessory uses in our bylaw, and I just want to point out, point out that a storage shed or a barn not exceeding 1,200 square feet, which is big. That's 30 by 40, which would never fit back there. But, you know, that just shows you how big they could get or could actually go to 25 feet in height. That is allowed in the residential district by right. And that building, as you know, an accessory building to a principal structure, so complying respects the yard requirements as chapter, an unattached accessory building. Serving one or two family may be located in the rear yard could actually be seven and a half feet. You know, up to the side or real lot line. Then, you know, so, so, you know, that's what would be allowed back there. And I just think with, where he's placing this or proposing to place it. Really fits in well with the neighborhood. And, you know, I'm sure Mrs. Sariel will speak for herself and her feelings, but we would. Ask her to respectfully consider that, you know, this is probably where we're proposing to put this is, is probably the best spot for everybody. And, you know, there's certainly our unique circumstances related to this lot, as you just heard with topography and, and locations of structures, et cetera. And we don't think there'd be a real detriment to anybody at the end of the day, when you factor what else could be done here by right. So that's.
Brian, I, I drove up by the property. It looks like, and didn't go on it, but. Can you explain the fencing situation back there? It looks like there's two different fences. One goes across the whole backyard, one only goes three quarters of the way. It's very confusing to me.
I can explain that to you if you'd like.
I'd love somebody to.
He put her fence, there was a wooden fence there, obviously. She replaced that. The fence.
Is hers the one with the trellis on the top? Lattice on top?
Now, you know. That's her fence now. So.
Which is also behind your fence?
Yes.
My fence was there. Her fence was there. She put that fence up. I put a fence up there because I needed some privacy in the backyard and the whole top was open. So I, I, the whole back, the, the, the back of the house there, it's, you know, I have pavers in back there and stuff like that. So it had to be cleaned up, you know?
So how tall is that fence that you put?
Seven and a half feet to the top of the fence.
How much?
Close, seven and a half feet from finished grade.
So how tall is her fence? Like four feet?
Well. I could show you in an earlier picture, but her fence steps down there because her yard steps down there because she has the pool that's. In ground, it's raised behind her house. And then she walks down lower to her lower ground.
Okay.
So.
Her fence is at different levels.
I put my fence up because.
You know, your fence from gray to the top of the fence is seven and a half feet.
Correct, correct.
It's a lot taller than that.
No, that's what it is. It's a six foot fence and it's off the ground approximately. Not even 18 inches.
Okay. But it ends.
I measured it because I was curious as how high, how it was.
And it, and it, and it ends, it doesn't go the full length of your property, right?
What I was going to do was if I'm going to drop the grade back there with the fences, I got to leave the grade up. So I was going to have to put a retaining wall. Continue the fence to the corner of the garage, not into the corner, but, you know, up to the garage. The retaining wall, and that's where I drop down to meet the. Trying to meet the neighbor's yard. I don't have to do that now. I could build a garage at the elevation that it's at. So I'm trying to bring everything lower for everybody, you know, that's the idea. If you went back to. One of those older pitches, Brian, I think it was a first set, you can see how the fence went, you know, it went down. Yeah, her old fence went down.
You don't need to do that. It just, it just steps down. Yeah, because the elevation steps down.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point. So.
That's why I stopped the fence there. From that point on, I put a. I built a small concrete retaining wall. Concrete and stone. It's not permanent. I just laid it in there.
So. Have you guys discussed this with your neighbors? Did you guys go all over this with them?
I didn't know.
Okay, your audio sort of cut out there. I don't know if one of you can repeat that, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Brian didn't go over and talk to Sharon. I did.
All right. So she's, she's already seen this.
The original plan. And I told her we were going to step down. I didn't get it into any detail about it with her.
But was this after our last hearing, when I think this subject came up and we suggested?
Yes.
That the parties have an offline conversation?
Yeah.
Yep, I've got the new plans from the architect. I brought those over to her. Showed her what we were going to do, told her we were going to drop the elevation down so the whole garage would come down and it wouldn't be so high. Asked her if she wanted to keep a copy of the plan. She didn't. And she brought me in her house. She showed me. Why she thought we built such a big addition in the back. I mean, it's the same, it's not even as high as our original house was. She was very nice to me. We said goodbye and I haven't seen her since.
Okay. I think that's what Joe was getting at.
Well, I'm, yeah, because I'm only, because I don't think anyone from the board really had a problem. It was the neighbors, if I remember correctly. Right?
One, yes.
So. I mean, Joe, I guess she'll speak in a minute.
Yep. We'll get there once we get through.
Oh, I'm not ready.
Yeah, not yet. Yeah, I guess, I don't know, just speaking for myself, I, I thought there might have been more. More, more changes. I guess I'm, I'm trying to visualize, you know, the, the grade going down. Well, they're getting two feet narrower and closer to the lot line and how that's. How that's a compromise, I think, better, but she can speak for herself because she's comfortable with that. But I'm just trying to see, I, I guess I thought. Maybe the height would come down of the building. You're saying it would by reducing the grade. I'm sorry. So I, I'm just trying to internalize and. Well, I try to understand all this. And I don't know if other board members are on that same.
Well, I, I also feel, Mr. Chairman, that the, the height might have dropped, but they, they added a dorm too. So that seemed kind of odd.
Well, can I explain? Can I explain what was done there? The height was dropped, not only in dropping it in the ground, but we also took most of the knee wall out upstairs on the second floor. We narrowed it. And then because of the headroom, the architect suggested that I put the dormer there for headroom for the storage that I was looking to. To get.
Sure.
So it wasn't just the height. Height wasn't coming down just because of the ground. We also took two and a half feet to three feet out of the knee wall that was on the second floor. And I can't commit to it, but if I could drop it to a pit, a 10 pitch, we could possibly do that. But I can't commit to that until I have more particulars from the architect, you know? Right now it's a 12 pitch.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, I just want to ask a question. What is the? Is this a two-story garage? I mean, is there a second floor to it? I, forgive me if this has already been, there is. So you're going to have essentially, you know, a 10-foot floor to ceiling on the first floor and then. 10 feet on the second floor.
I have a 2005. Yes.
With a dormer, it's pretty much going to be flat out. It's going to be two 10-foot stories. With a dormer.
One speaker at a time, please. One speaker at a time. Michael, please, please finish.
It just seems large to me. That's, it doesn't seem like a garage to me. I just, I left the screen for a bit and I looked out at, back at my garage. I can't imagine a 21-foot garage, but maybe if it's allowed by right, Brian spoke about that earlier, that, that is what it is. But this isn't by right because you're asking for. Variants. So why does it have to be that tall? Is there a boat going in there? Is there going to be?
I.
Yeah. I just never even seen a 21-foot. Garage.
That's all. I mean.
Brian, yep.
Can I talk?
Yes.
Okay. The garage itself is for my 2005 truck that is in the picture. I also have two other vehicles. You have a vehicle. And I have a truck. When you put a truck in a garage, there's not much showing space left. It's only 18 foot wide. You know, I work on the truck, you know, changing oil, things like that. I'd love to do. And the upstairs is mainly for storage. And I have a basement that's full overflowing right now with stuff that, you know, we just. I need storage. I mean, that's what it's for. There's no joking about it. I'm not doing anything different. And, you know, that's what it is. The height is what it is. I, I'm not an architect. So I told him I wanted, you know. Eight foot door downstairs, which he did. Which I would think that'd be a nine foot ceiling. I'm not sure. And you have, you know, your next door up and that. I mean, if I can bring the height down more, I will, but. I'm not the architect. I don't know how that works, to be honest with you.
Thank you. Other members? Okay, while you're all contemplating. The film, what other, we've got the new plans. There's no other. So we did get a letter. From Mr. Sariello. I think after our last hearing, just finding it now in her file. But she's also here so she can speak to perhaps the, the genus, you know, the, the key points in this letter. But. If there's nothing else, board members at this time, I can open up the public testimony. Okay. So Mr. Sariello, if you wish, you can unmute and we'll open it up for public comment.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Sharon Sariello. I live at 34 Quarters Street in Wakeville.
Thank you.
Do I talk now?
Yes, you do.
Okay, from my perspective. I'm the one who has to live with this structure. I'm already boxed in with the, the first appeal that we are. In the monstrosity of the add-on in the back of the house. I, I would like to please consider that I'm the one who has to live. My life here and, and as well as I have lived with this, with that already. Please don't. Do not turn a deaf ear to my concerns. I'm asking that this request is turned down. I've been here for 33 years. I thought if they built. What they want closer to the front of their house, I'm assuming the reason is that. They don't want the, the structure taking up their view. Please take my. Please take into, please take my thoughts into consideration. I'm still not understanding why I, I couldn't, oh, right, can't get through the meaning, but I understand that now. But he's saying, he's saying. A breathing again, he, he mentioned the word breathing again, you know. With having the structure. Well, I, I can't breathe with having this big structure behind, behind me as it is. Like I told you, I have this. Huge structure already that we agreed upon, but, you know, not knowing. Architecture, not knowing heights, not knowing, you know, a lay, I'm a layman and I, I, I agree, you know, to benefit, you know. So they can have a beautiful home and everything else, but it's, it's gotten. Crazy. It, it's gotten crazy. Why do they need a variance if he underlined it, the fact that it, it, it only has to be seven and a half. Feet from my fence, not even his fence, but from my fence. And, and why is it so tall? Why is it, you know, I mean, if it's storage and the, and the pod is, is. Not that much, you know, the, the measurements of the pod is all he, if that's all he needs for the top. I don't understand. And what is the final length of this thing? You know? I just, I just feel it's, I'm getting boxed in, closed in and. And also, when he was indicating about that. Wall that he, he, with the rocks that he built, he, that limb was flat before he put, he dumped a lot of. Construction or, or dirt and everything else, which built it up higher. And then he's saying he's going to go 14 inches down, which is. Back to where the, maybe the, the flatland used to be. I, I don't even think it's going to be down to where the flatland used to be. I mean, this was not there. This, this mound of dirt with that, he put a, a wall there. Uh, in front of it to make it um, I don't know, a lift up. Maybe they were gonna use it for a garden or something, but now they're gonna put a garage there. Um, I just think. I it's it's just closing me in. It just, I mean, if you have to see where I live and what's um, what I've already dealing with here. It's it's crazy. It it's over, it's oversized. And that's about all I can say about this whole thing.
Okay, um, well, you raised a a few points. Um, but I think he's showing the plot plan now that. Those that propose new dimensions. And the reason they need a variance is not because of its location to the lot line. It's because the garage would be in the side yard. Um, if if it was attached to the house. And setback from the line, they could do it by right. Right, Brian?
Well, yeah, I mean, let's talk about that because, you know, that's one of the options, you know, I mean, you know, we're trying to, we're trying, I I very much respect what um, Mr. Ariel is saying, but. What I what I want to avoid is coming out of this meeting and then something, you know, something else goes here by right and then folks are saying, how how that happened? Because, you know, one of the options that we're looking at potentially is you could take this garage and you can attach it over here. And now you know, you you might be able to avoid the variance because you got plenty to meet the fifteen-yard setback. So in in it would actually bring it closer. You know, what we're trying to do is is get it aside, put it in the corner of the lot. So um, you know, that's what we're trying to do. Um, you know, the other thing I mentioned, you know, that you can have. You know, you talked about heights. You can have a, you can have a shed or a bond in your backyard by right that can be twenty-five feet high. You know, something could go back here for the storage issue. Keep it seven and a half feet and it can be by right. Um, and I'm not saying that that's gonna happen, but something's gonna happen here because he needs storage. So I it to me, it's it's a great opportunity that we're all here. Including Miss Sarriello, that we try to find something that works for everybody. Um, instead of, you know, i- i- in a unified front that that tries to, you know, we're trying to address her concerns. Um, and we're happy to listen to more and to do what we can to maybe adjust more, but um. We we just don't want to be throwing arrows in the dock, if you know what I mean.
I'm trying to find common ground here myself and and from what I heard that that you can. Um, you can no longer attach a garage to the house because of a fire hazard or something. I might be wrong in that respect, but um, the neighbor next room, Kathy, uh, she, her garage, she couldn't. Attach it to her house because. Of the law, you know?
Too close to the lot line.
Yeah, see, they got. Yeah, yeah, Chip, yeah.
So what I what I'm hearing is that she's feeling closed and I don't wanna, uh, let me just throw a couple of things out. I respect the idea of pushing it back, but by pushing it back. You're putting the back of the building right up, you know, not right up against the fence, but. If I'm hearing this is Sarriello, right, that she's feeling closed in and constrained. Whoa, and feeling like there's gonna be a big wall, just a blank wall that she's gonna be looking at from her pool or from whatever, when the kids are playing out there or whatever. What happens if you, why can't, uh, th- there just looks to be a ton of paving here to me? Why can't we pull the garage forward? Keep it skinny and do some landscaping along that back wall. That will help break up the field. And be beneficial to both parties from a shade, from a conservation standpoint, you know, maybe put some deciduous trees in there or. Some big tall aprovides or or something, but. Pull the garage, keep it skinny, but pull the garage forward uh, so that you could plant. Um, some decent-sized trees that would help break that up. I I don't know if that helps or not, but that's. From what I've heard. You know, the other, I guess the other issue is. Reduce the height of the garage, you know, I. I'm hearing that we don't like the big black wall. We've never approved a variance where there's been a neighbor in such opposition. Um, and I can't, I can't, you know. I can't say that I can vote in favor of it with the neighbor not. Being on board with what's happening. So somehow. There's gotta be some compromises made on both sides, so planting has often been a compromise that we've used. You know, a ten-pitch roof. Uh, lots of things can happen. Uh, to me, this is, I would agree that this is excessive, but I have no idea. How much storage and what sort of things are going up onto the top of a garage up a set of staircase. I mean. Most people throw things in attics for storage, which are four feet tall. I mean, I. I hear it, I hear it by right, all those different things, but I I think there's gotta be some compromise here somewhere on all parties.
Brian, can you can you address that? Is you have you considered the ability to pull this forward?
I didn't consider the pulling it forward. I'm trying to put it more to code instead of getting it more out of code. No, you get things farther away from lot lines. It's much closer to code. I mean, the code isn't the issue. It's that your neighbor, if you hear her, feels like she's getting boxed in from the. Previous variance that you requested and received. Now you're asking for another one and you're talking about putting a twenty-two-foot wall. Against her yard, seven and a half feet away from it. I get how she feels. I wouldn't be in favor of it either. So I'd look for a compromise to solve it, either softening it with landscaping it, pulling it away a little bit. And softening it with landscaping or lowering it so she doesn't feel like she's getting a twenty-two-foot wall in her backyard.
Yep, Chip, he's.
That's my opinion.
Previous previous submission basically showed almost eleven point nine feet. Uh, away from her lot line and what he's done is slid it back and shrunk the building a bit. So if he was go back to the setback that he originally proposed with the shrunken sized building. And that is, you point out, basically have some dense trees along there. Then, you know, she's not looking at the building. She's looking at the trees. Now we can get a discussion as to how big the trees are, what the hell they are. Basically, in this case, so it's sort of, you're not looking at the building, you're looking at shrubbery or or something.
If if that would help, yeah, I I just, I appreciate that. It, to me, they're just, I get the lots of cars and the need for a big driveway. But I'd keep the dimensions of the garage the same, pull it forward and get away from that fence. And try to either do a combination of fence and trees or. Trees alone or something to get everybody on board, because I can't be in favor of a variance. When the rear of butter is not in favor.
Oh, let me interject. So you you were thinking along the same lines I was tripping. I was gonna actually ask Miss Sarriello. Is there a situation that she thinks would be amenable to her? Along the lines of things you're saying, reduce the height, bring it further away from the property line. Would those be things that you think you could?
Consider.
Live with or, yeah, would be a compromise if if they were able to do that.
I just don't know why the height has to be so high. I mean.
He's said it multiple times, storage. Storage in their garage.
I know, but it's like.
Not unreasonable.
Massive. But um, I I I like try to. You know, I mean, I gave my approval to this other massive thing. I I just don't want another massive. I mean, I'm, I it you, it's almost like I got a factory behind me and they're gonna build another factory be uh, next to it. It's like it's boxed in. It's it's.
I I understand you've you've made that point. We're we're trying to ask you as if there's a situation that you could. Be somewhat more comfortable with. That's what we're trying to get to. We we hear your concerns.
Okay, I don't know. Yeah, I I mean, I'd have. Yeah, be to besides pulling it forward, you know, I mean, it's just a um, a massive thing. I just don't want to see, but. Lower it if they can, you know? I'm asking, you know, I mean, I understand they want to structure there. I'm a saying, okay, you want to structure there, so and in that respect, I'm. I'm o- okay with that, but the the size of it in the the, you know, if they can pull it forward, you know? So I am trying to, uh, you know.
Would 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 trees along the lot line help? So that you're not looking at a wall?
No, I I don't think trees would be the be a um. A a resolution for this because of the fact that, number one, um. You know, the 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 stuff that would come over on this side, you know, um, in the pool, it I I just don't see that, but you know, pe. That people can do what they want on their property of of for for landscaping and stuff. I understand that, but um. I I it's it's this blockage of, I mean.
Wouldn't necessarily be huge trees with huge canopies. I don't think we're thinking about that as as options.
I don't know. Sounds like she doesn't want trees, so I mean, at some point, there's gotta be a compromise. So if we're not willing to compromise, then we just have to. Do the best we can and make a judgment.
Yeah, just um, just please, and I'm thirty-three years here, third, I'm going on thirty-four. I just. I just can't believe the 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 first one we have approved. Was so massive because I, like I said, I'm a layman. I didn't know the dimensions of a, you know, would it, the massive thing that they were putting behind me. And it just blocked me, you know, and now I have another one, you know?
So let me, let me ask a question, Miss Sarriello. I I know you say you're a layman. What happens if? They put up, because there's nothing on the property. What happens if they put up some two-by-fours and and. Kind of make some sort of. Idea so that you can really understand what it is, instead of just thinking it's this massive thing. I mean, it's only sixteen feet wide. It's it's not that wide. What happens if they? Put some two-by-fours up and the angle of the roof and let you have an idea of how big it's really gonna be.
Yeah, that would, you know, because of the fact that you, like you, like you said, I I'm thinking this construction that's gonna be. Massive, you know, again, because because of the fact that what I got from the first approval.
Yeah, I I hear you.
Yeah, yeah, so I I like that sounds.
I think that there's some way they can show you what it's gonna be. Maybe it won't be as bad in your head as you think it is.
Yeah, yeah, but.
What do you guys think of that idea? Just trying to, just trying to throw ideas out there.
Can I ask a question? If we don't get, if we don't, if we decide not to do a garage. Brian said we could put a shed up. That is twelve hundred square feet and twenty-five feet feet high.
No, you wouldn't fit it.
I know, I know, I know. I know we wouldn't fit it.
You could put a shed.
But we could, what, we could, we could, without get, we could just go pull a permit to build a shed?
You could. As long as it's in the, as long as it's in the backyard. From the from the property line.
So I could, in this back corner over there. I could take a, I could build a shed. That was twenty-five feet high if I wanted to and ten feet wide.
Not the backyard, it's the side yard.
It it would have to be.
Fit into the backyard.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to clarify where it had to go and how high it could be.
By right, as Brian showed in that email, I think he had some bullet points.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify where it would go.
It would have to be back in that area where his cursor is.
It could go back where you're proposing the garage.
Yeah, could go back here.
It could go back.
That's behind the house.
You just have to shrink it. I mean, that's my point. That's why I, you know, I I just, you know, I I've I've done this for thirty years in numerous cities and towns. These situations, it's, as the board has said, it's better for the neighbors to figure out what works for everybody.
Okay.
Then and then then just trying to stuff things in that that are by right. A lot of times, a variance is a tool. To do better development, to do better. Placement, to do more accommodating placement. And that's why I said at the beginning, you know, if if things don't work out here just for everybody, you know, I. You know what always happens in 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 Gail Carmory knows it being in the building department. People come down after the fact and they go, how did this happen? Well, that's allowed by the bylaw. They can do it by right, right? So, so, you know, I I think, I think, I think we need to, I don't, uh, Chip, I always like your idea about, you know, constructing something. I just don't know. I don't know how you do that, you know?
With two-by-fours, not that difficult. You don't have to construct the wall. You're just constructing two little posts and a roof line. Literally.
Do it on the ground.
Shoots. I don't care what it is, strapping. I mean, it's not.
He just, just to show her the height.
The height and the width and the angles of the roof so that she doesn't feel like it's a whole. I mean, to me, what I'm hearing is. The back of your house came out, although she was okay with it, came out bigger than she was expecting. Cause she didn't understand the drawings. So I think she's hearing twenty-two feet. You know, and feeling like, oh, my God, it's gonna be the same thing that happened. If you can show her it's not gonna be the same thing that happened, maybe she'll be like, okay, that's not so bad. I don't know. But I'm just trying to get somewhere where we're not talking about a garage for another three hours. And to get something that you and she can be good neighbors about and feel comfortable about.
I've always tried to do that.
Yeah, that's, that's an idea I had. You can run with it or not.
Sounds like an idea to me.
And I think it might help visually. A lot of people need some help visually as to this is what it's gonna be. It's not, you know, there's not gonna be windows. Nobody's staring down on you. It, we're gonna tuck it into this corner as best as possible. This is what it is. I mean. Jim, help me, Mr. McBane.
No, or maybe the compromise. Or maybe the compromise, it it does have to come forward and and that. Should feel better about it and it might not be ideal what they're looking for, but it might be the way, the path forward. So they get most of what they, that's what compromise is all about. They get most of what they want, the storage, the actual structure, but it's just closer to their. House than than uh, what they're showing here. But again, we we don't really want to spend another half an hour talking about this. I think they need to go back and. And spend a little more time and have maybe a longer conversation and maybe do that kind of. Framing just to help her visualize.
I I'm, I have a question to ask, so.
Okay.
Um, where he, where they piled all that dirt and then put that fence, that. Uh, rock wall there. Are they bringing that all down to level the land and then putting it fourteen inches down or no?
Yes, that's where we're gonna take the dirt away.
She just said, are you gonna put it fourteen inches down after taking the dirt away?
Yes.
No, well, the foundation goes in the ground, but no, 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 no.
No, you're going level with her backyard, basically.
Which is.
Fourteen inches below her backyard.
No, not below.
Not below her.
You're going basically to her backyard.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Does that help? Well, you know, like. Help lower the garage.
Yeah, yes, please, yeah. Uh, I I mean, I'm interested in helping out and everything else, but I just. On my end, I have to, you know, I'm boxed in and I just, but the visual would would help me a lot. I mean, that would take a lot of pressure off of my my thoughts.
Yeah, maybe if you stood on like your deck out in the back where you sit. And we'll put it up and then he'll show you how it won't, you know, it'll be down lower. You'll probably be looking at the top of it.
Yeah.
That's exactly what needs to happen.
Exactly, exactly. Good idea.
You could move it front and back, five feet from the fence where you want it. Move it a little forward if it still feels a little claustrophobic. And I certainly sounds to me like you two can come on common ground.
I think we can.
Yeah, we're not looking to have a an issue here. It's just, you know, I'm just trying to, you know, we're trying to be friendly neighbors as well, you know, we're trying to. Be good with each other and not have an issue, but you know, when you decide to build something, you need to to discuss it and 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 hopefully both in an agreement. Uh, so that nobody feels in a, in a closed situation.
Okay, our points, points all made and taken, and I think we have a plan forward. Um, board, board members, any new comments? I'm I'm gonna close the public testimony.
Is there any other public though, Dave? I'm hoping not.
I didn't think, I didn't see anybody else.
Let me just double check. I'm going to the other viewer. I can see the hand icon. Anyone else going, going? Not seeing any waving. Okay. Well, calls of the public testimony for the evening. I think we've covered all the selling points. Back to the board.
Move that we.
Well, any final comments? I saw Tom on his phone. I just want to make sure. Is anyone?
Let's, I'm I'm begging you to move on.
Okay. Well, I I just want to ask Brian and Judy if uh, they think that they'll be able to accomplish that by, you know, get that up and and.
Yeah, what I'll, I I'll go over to Home Depot. I think Saturday or Sunday, it's supposed to be sunny out. I'll grab some strapping. I'll make up the A-frame according to the plans and I'll just end it. We'll both stand it up and she can take a look. I mean.
Weekend, Sharon?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right, I'll I'll come over and grab you when now, when when we're ready.
Okay, and uh, are we gonna have another, is there another meeting after this?
Yeah, we're gonna continue this.
Okay, okay. Will I be notified or do I, am I? Will I be notified or do I, am I supposed to jot down the time?
You can jot down and you can call Gail or the building department the day of just to make sure nothing is um, you know, if they, if there were some delay, that we would be uh, they'd be able to inform you. Otherwise, we'll, we'll be here on November eighteenth.
November eighteenth.
I move that we continue this hearing to November eighteenth at seven P M.
Chip, I thank you for your help in figuring out how to get this.
I think you guys will be able to come to terms.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Jim. Um, any discussion, board members?
No.
Everyone in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Joe?
Yep.
Greg? And Mike? Yes, okay. So thank you. We'll see you on November eighteenth and hopefully we'll be in a lot closer place to uh, make a decision here. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you not get out of this? They got other meetings, you know? So I wanted to just get out of. We're in.
Okay, our next hearing, twenty-one dash sixteen, Micah Canistero at one-on-one Cedar Street. Brian, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate that.
I know you didn't leave, but just welcome you to the new hearing.
I'm here. Um, okay, we're, we're here. Uh, um, Micah Canistero is here somewhere. Micah, where I, oh, there you are. Um, turn the screen on and who, who's with us, Micah? Is it uh, you and me?
Uh, we have, I believe Lee's on the phone as well, the architect.
Oh, Lee's on the phone. Okay, great. Yeah, so I'm, I'm just gonna get right into this, but, you know, I know the board's uh, getting tired and we're, we're prepared. Um, so we submitted um, some revised uh, plans um, per the board's request, so I'm gonna uh, just walk you through that quickly. So this is a revised site plan and what the board wanted was they wanted a note here that this piece of pavement is going to be removed. Um, so that in, in the sheds gonna be removed too. Um, so that was kind of a cleanup item uh, that the board had requested. Then we also did some cleanup work on revising the landscaping plan. Um, this is really nicely adjusted now. If you remember, you wanted um, some um, the paves put in the front. So that, that has now been specked. Okay, and I'm gonna exit out of that. Checklist. The materials. Hold on, I'm trying to open that.
Brian, while you're trying to open that, did you send um, conditions and
I did.
What you're looking for?
I did. Can you see that or no?
No.
Huh, hang on. I don't know why. Still a big no?
Nothing, yeah.
Here we go. Now?
Yep.
Thank God, okay. So what we did is we just made some corrections on this um. We you see, we, we expect the white and Greg had mentioned to get rid of the seven feet on that, so we cleaned that up. Um, so this has all been kind of cleaned up and finalized as requested by the board. It's got a new date of ten, seven on it.
Ten, seven, that's before our last hearing.
Um, I just don't think, I don't, I'm wondering, um, Micah, do you think, do you think, Lee, did you not, did, Lee, do I have the right one here? I just wanna make sure. Did you just not change the date on it?
That, that's correct. I actually updated that guys. Uh, hopefully the date's not a problem, but um, that was the one change I think that was needed to be made.
So you just didn't, you just didn't, we need to put a revision date on that, Micah.
That's no problem.
Yeah, that's not a problem. So you just changed that date to ten twenty-eight, today's, today's date?
Sure.
Okay, just so that there's a, there's a proper record.
The materials package part, the other ones have the rap, right, the revision?
Yes, they do. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. All right. And the final thing was it, well, there's two things, so let me just, let me just uh, okay. So I, you asked us to get correspondence from the town engineer. I work with the uh, chair to do that as you were requested. We do have a correspondence and I'm gonna share. I don't know if the board saw it. I think it came in late this afternoon.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
Okay. Dave, you didn't see it?
Um, I checked my email about a half an hour ago and I think it just showed up, but I.
Yeah, they were having problems, I think, at town hall today with.
Yeah.
Okay, can you see that?
Yep.
Great. So this is a memorandum uh, to town engineer. We just got this today. Uh, DPW and General Division attended onsite review on ten-eight as reviewed the following information, basically our plans. General comments, the additional pavement for the new way parking is spaced, eight roof parking is well below the town's fifteen thousand square foot stormwater bylaw drainage threshold. Any stormwater impacts from the proposal should be considered the minimus and will not exasperate the current stormwater issues adjacent to the site. Public Works will work uh, in, to investigate and remedy the cause of the stormwater flooding issue adjacent to the subject property through the roadway and drainage capital program in the upcoming year. So, you know, this is, I think, you know, this project ironically, I think, has been a, has been a, you know, potentially a benefit for the whole neighborhood because this issue was raised um, by Mr. Ferwick, who I think is on here tonight, who has been, I think, just a wonderful neighbor to work with. I thank him uh, through this process, but you know, because we, we've worked through the, with the engineer, I think something that's been dogging the neighborhood for decades is now finally gonna get addressed uh, and not, and, and not in the too distant future. So thank you, Mr. Ferwick, and thank you for all your, your uh, you know, welcoming us and, and working with us. Very much appreciated um, the, the way you went about this. Um, and I did uh, submit um, some draft. You would ask, you would ask to, to consider an O and M plan. And, you know, I just thought, you know, on smaller projects like this, you know, to me, it's just easier just to put things in the can, as conditions of a decision. And that's why I did, you know, drafts, can, draft conditions, and I brought them up. Um, and this is a typical one where you maintain jurisdiction over the, over the project. Uh, two is the appearance that the project has to be shown as on the site plan architectural and final landscape plan. Um, this would require a uh, review of the building permit plans uh, when they're pulled. Um, then it is a conflict between the plans and the decision, the plans control. Um, this is um, this is the landscaping. Uh, if it's not completed prior to C O, then it's typical that you will require a surety. And then I will let you read six. I'll, I'll, I'll just read it, but you might wanna read along, cause I think this is probably one of the ones that you had concern over. The landscaping features of the property, including all lawn areas, trees, shrubs, flowering plants, planting, mulch beds, irrigation system, foliage which are in the back and walkways will be managed and maintained through a combination of one, ongoing and seasonal inspection as well as two, task specific or scope specific management and maintenance. Landscaping features shall be maintained in good condition at all times and any dead landscaping features shall be replaced on a regular basis per manufacturer specifications and the requirements. So that's a typical condition that you've used. Then as far as um, um, as far as um, maintaining uh, the building, seven, the exterior components of the building shall be maintained in good condition, including painting at all times. Any necessary repairs shall be made in a timely manner as soon as weather allows. The rear roof deck, and this was important uh, to Mr. Ferwick and the board, I think um, uh, respected that. The rear roof deck shall not be utilized in any manner whatsoever, except for building maintenance purposes. There shall be no placement or storage of any personal property on the rear roof deck. Furthermore, there shall be no congregating, socializing, or smoking on the rear roof deck. I thought of that, you know, it could become a, you know, place for people that live up there to just go out and smoke and, and, and gather. So you know, I, I came up with that language and thought to, to put that in there. Um, I didn't know, and we might, you know, if, if something would need to go, this is that, is that rear roof, roof deck I put for maintenance purposes? Is it also a second means of act of egress in an emergency?
It's not.
Okay, cause that's, that's the only other thing I would have added.
There'd have to be a set of stairs from it, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which there is not.
Yep, okay. Lee, are you on board, Lee, are you on board with that? Is he here? Micah, is Lee here?
I believe he was joining. I, I can't see if he's on though.
But Mike, you know, that's not gonna be a second means of egress for that unit?
No, 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 it's not. Okay, answer that question.
All right, and then uh, Mr. Topell asked for eight, uh, you had mentioned condominiums. In the event the units of the building are condominiumized, the condominium documents shall include a requirement that these conditions shall be complied with by the unit owners and the condominium associated all times and that said provision shall remain in the condominium documents in perpetuity and shall not be removed from the condominium documents by amendment or otherwise. Um, so they're locked in and the, you know, what, what we prevent here is um, you know, people buy the units and they say, hey, you know, let's get rid of this condition, take it out. They can't take it out. But um, these, these um, these conditions are prior to any condominium, so they, they bind any owner, including unit owners.
Um, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Do you think it should be reinforced as required by um, the zoning board of appeals? Just someone reads that, someone reads it quickly.
Yeah.
They don't realize that there's, there's authority behind it.
Yeah, I think probably, um, probably would be a nine. I'll just make a note to, that, that the, the, the decision will be referenced in the condo documents. And Jim, what was your, could you just say it again, Jim, just so I?
Well, I was, I just mentioning basically that it's, it's, it's dictated by the zoning board of appeals or it's set in stone by the zoning board of appeals, something.
Yeah, I can come up with that. Yep.
Some way to notate the fact that, that this is a legal document, basically uh, that is bound by this property, basically.
What I, what I usually do, like on North Ave, on any, you know, when, when, you know, I think what it would be is, is that the, that the board's decision needs to be referenced in the condominium documents and, and incorporated in them. And basically um, that they, you, you're right, that it can't, you know, the key thing is, is that it can't be removed. But the bottom line is, these are conditions that are, are a special permit that run with the land.
Yeah.
It doesn't, you know, condominiums are bound by it. I mean, you know, they, they can't say, oh, we, now we got four owners, we don't have to buy, but no, no. The key is, is that your decision goes on record before that, the condominium master deed. It takes priority. But, but we, I agree with the language and I've have it an eight and we can beef up the language in nine when I write this with the chair in the event you approve it. And that's what I had. I, I'm, you know, obviously, it's your decision um, to, if you wanna add more.
Right. You caught the things that I was concerned about.
Brian, what did we end up uh, figuring out for trash?
Oh, thank you. Um, Mike, you wanna talk a little about that? Um, Michael was proposing, uh, do you have that, Mike? If I give you the screen, that you can bring that up? Or no?
Well, uh, I wouldn't know how to share a screen, but if you pull up the
I think I can.
The site plan, I can kinda talk through it.
I think I can do it. Hold on.
I think I even highlighted a couple of places where I was thinking would work well, but the
You did.
The, the lot is, is plenty big where we can, where, you know, we can, I think we can agree on a location for the bins. You know, obviously, each unit is gonna have their own trash and their um, um, my thought is to put them in a, a box and so I sent
Yeah.
I sent Brian a couple of examples, which he'll pull up right now. Um, ra- rather than just be looking at trash bins, you know, maybe, you know, eight trash bins, including recycling. Each unit would have its own box and so the, the bins would roll in and out. And there's a couple of locations I was thinking would, would be convenient for, for the units. Um, and I think Brian's pulling that up right now.
Yeah, hold on. Let me see if this is it. You?
I can easily forty that in two seconds, Brian, if you'd like.
Yep, that'd be good.
Okay.
What are you trying to bring up?
I'm trying to bring up uh, your, your question, uh, the question on the trash that Joe raised, how, how, what we're thinking about with that.
Should reach you any second. It's on its way.
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, I thought you were trying to bring up the site plan, which already showed.
No.
Got it.
There it is.
Board members, keep me honest, we have letters when we get to the public part that have been sent to us, so I wanna read those into the file. Don't let me forget.
Oh, you added it to the um.
Yeah, I added it to one of the PowerPoints in case we needed it.
No. Okay. Here we go. There we are. So this is, can you see it?
Yes.
Yeah. So this is what Mike was talking about. And this yellow spot is not where, don't worry, Dave, Ferwick, that's not where it's going. Um, what Mike had talked about was putting it, you know, back and, back and, some of these back in this area. Another one could go back potentially in this area. Uh, but um.
Yeah, I was actually thinking uh, along the front stairwell, which leads out to the driveway. I shouldn't say front stairwell, I should say the driveway stairwell.
Right here?
Um, yeah, right there in between. It's act, that's actually where the school keeps its trash. They have their own trash bins and there's um, I believe there is uh, at least two large trash bins there that they'll roll there, there's in and out of. So I was thinking two there for two of the units and I was thinking two in the back right there, Brian, yep. So the person can walk down the stairs or walk up the stairs, put their trash out, or the, and the upper unit can walk down the stairs by the driveway, put theirs out. And the lower unit on the main part of the house can also uh, access them in that same spot. And it's not uh, you know, I think, I think visually, it's, it'll be fine for the property.
And you'd put them in boxes like you're suggesting here?
Yeah, I'm putting, I'm, that, that's just an image of one I pulled up. I put, I do something similar. That was just an idea I pulled offline, but something that, so they're not just trash bins floating on the property. I, I would put uh, a fixture there to, to put in.
Wouldn't it maybe paint them white to match the building or something like that or?
Yeah, I would definitely make sure it's coordinated with the property. I want it to make it look nice.
Brian, can you add a condition that this is how trash would be handled?
Yeah.
So we don't end up with barrels all over the place. And did we find out if the town will pick it up or not?
Uh, no, but I can tell you right now that they won't.
No.
No.
I thought it was five.
No, basically, um, it's two. No, basically, um it's two, my, they only pick up, they only pick up two. My recollection chip is they only pick up two, one to two families.
Okay.
Because when um, you know, I've had some of these smaller projects that they they won't do it.
I think they do three. They do three families also, I believe.
Do they? We'll try. We'll try, but I'm not.
But you might, you might be better off with, you know, a little. Guy coming in, opening up all everybody's barrels, I'll dumping them, put the barrels back in.
Yeah. Okay, other other items? Well, he's typing.
Yep, I got it.
I went through the punch list from last time of my notes and I think we. Updated the site plan. Materials, trash, engineering. Was there anything else, board members? You may have had in your notes or. Now that you've seen the updated plans, anything new?
We wanna cover um snow removal cuz we talked about where the snow removal would be placed.
I mean, at at this point, Jim, I think snow removal in in a four unit like this is is self-explanatory. It's like if they don't push it into the right spots and they start losing spaces. They're gonna have to do something about it.
We have plenty of room over here.
Yeah, I mean, they can pile, they can make snow forts over there.
You've got two areas where it can go.
Yeah, at the end of that, both, I can't put the cursor, but. By the first group of four and by the second group of four.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't think snow removal is an issue on this site.
I love to plow this drive. You could just push it down and push it all back in this corner.
Be careful what you wish for, Brian.
I'll take it, I'll take you up on that, Brian.
Well, usually, uh whether it's a condition or an O and M, it would probably say, you know, if you're gonna lose. You can't lose spots, then you gotta haul it offsite kind of thing.
Yeah.
It doesn't say you have to put it here or there. I mean, some bigger projects we've had.
Yeah.
It designated on plans as part of the landscape plan or something, but. I think the key is that you can't lose spots. I mean, certainly your your tenants would let you know. I I I've I've been known to, I've been known to plow my clients' projects. Yeah, yeah. Okay, anything else?
Does the pavers need to be added to the materials list or are we careful that?
As long as they're can, I. I don't care about the site. The pavers are on the landscape plan, so whatever they pick for pavers is fine with me. As long as they're pavers, you know, that that's the real. That's the real key. All the entrances will look similar.
I mean, they have, they, I mean, they have stamped concrete, so that looked like pavers, so.
Well, other than, other than, well, you mentioned pavers, I'm looking at the. The trash can location at the bottom of the stairs in the middle of the building and it's some planting right there, so. We taking planting out to put uh trash can receptors?
I hope.
Well, that's, those plants aren't there currently um and. If that's where, if we can agree that that's where the the trash will go, then then we would modify um. The the landscaping design, we'd have to. But, you know, this, I was recommending those locations for purposes of discussion and then if you agree, then we would move forward.
I mean, you'd pave, if you're gonna get rid of that plant, then you'd pave that whole area. At the bottom of the stairway to the next stairway and put that receptor in there. Just like you did at the back staircase, so it it's just a matter of the fact that you're showing one thing and saying another, so. The whole set has to be coordinated in such a manner as we discussed.
Yeah, I I think the the contain, I think you need to pick the containers and place them on this plan somehow. So that we know where they're going and they're not haphazard.
Mike, yeah, I mean, the other, the other thing is you gotta remember, you know, like I was thinking, you know, if, did you ever consider putting a shed in the back?
Um but I, I would be open to that. I wasn't sure with setbacks, where am I gonna put it?
Well, the, you know, the the problem, you know, I'm talking myself out of that cuz the problem is you gotta remember, you gotta keep access to the trash during snowstorms, right?
Right, so you're shoveling and and who wants to walk to the back far left-hand corner to throw the trash in?
Yeah.
I mean, where he's, where he's proposed it is convenient to people that are exiting and going to their cars, so.
Exactly, right.
That makes more sense.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if we need to see it on the plan, if, as long as it's on pavers or not. If you're gonna put them, start replacing landscaping. With them, then we're gonna wanna see an update to that plan, but.
That's why I think we need to see it on the plan.
Okay.
I, not the, not the, it just as a condition that it gets sent to us for a review, not. Not to move forward or not, or not to continue.
Yeah. Okay, Brian, you got that one?
Just as an adjustment.
Yeah, okay. Anything else, board members?
In my opinion, Dave. That goes without stating. Humble opinion.
Yes, always. Any, anything else, board members? Okay, so we've heard all the testimony, all board members have weighed in on the merits of this um application for the special permit. Um to convert uh this from a one family to a four family, so unless there's any new testimony. Um I just gonna open to the public one last time and read these letters into the record. I don't know if the, any of these folks actually are in attendance as well. But if not, I would read them into the record. Okay. So at this time, I will open up the public testimony. I see Mr. Ferick's hand up. So please go ahead, sir. Just state your name and address for the record. Once you're unmuted, there we go. Mr. Eric, please go ahead. Is he having a technical difficulty?
Yeah.
Uh-oh.
I apologize for that. Can you hear this now?
Yes.
We'll be extremely brief. I just wanna thank everyone that was involved, uh Micah, uh Brian and uh Lee and meeting with uh the, I forget the uh. Environmental, uh the uh landscape engineer. Thank you very much for your cooperation and working with us on this. Um we like the, how it all came out and uh that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Anyone else? I see a few other folks on here, but not seeing hand waving or people coming off mute. Okay, so I will read what we have into the record cuz perhaps these folks are not here. So we have a letter from. Um David Frizziello, Frizziello. Um dated October twenty-sixth. To me may concern, we abut one-on-one Cedar Street and have some concern of the property turning into a four-unit condo. We prefer it to be two or possibly three-unit condo building instead. Parking on Cedar Street and the use of other, of that corner driveway used by multiple vehicles would certainly become a safety hazard. My other suggestion would be to turn Cedar Street to park on one side only or turn that section Cedar Street to a one-way direction. Town's choice of direction. During evening rush, the traffic from the commuter station backs up past Cedar Street. This intersection, Albion and Cedar, will become a dangerous intersection more than it already is. Thank you, best regards. He's at two seventy-three Albion Street. Uh, let's see, oh, two letters, that one we already read. Second letter that we received since our last hearing is from a Robert De Angelis at ninety-nine Cedar Street. Dated October tenth, oh, October fifteenth is when we received it, so it was after our last hearing. Uh regarding the conversion, um. Construction demolition of one-on-one Cedar Street. Water from rainstorms and snow melt running onto my property, raising the already high water table. Everyone has some pumps, including one-on-one Cedar. Paving over absorbing ground for eight parking spots could be catastrophic for me and the butters. Item three, a double with driveway exiting onto an already congested intersection corner. A traffic survey is mandatory. Item four, parking on Cedar Street. I own six registered cars. My tenants have three more. We combined only park one vehicle on the street. What about guest parking? I am entitled to a handicap parking spot, but have not petitioned for it, so teachers and parents would have close access to their children. Again, I am handicapped with many medical issues. I do not have a computer on the person who requested the parking restrictions. On Cedar Street for the school. Train commuters and apartment building vehicles for days and weeks on Cedar Street, weekends, I think. Check with the W P D Police Department, I assume. Thank you, Robert A. De Angelis, ninety-nine Cedar Street. So um. Once again, I'll just look down the list. Cuz I don't know if there'll be any more hearings, so. Um. Board members, are we, it sounds like we're perhaps at the end of this um application. And potentially ready to vote, so if if the board members are feeling that way, we're entertaining a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Move that we close the public portion.
Second.
All right, uh on favor, any discussion? All in favor, Chip?
Uh yes.
Jim?
Hi.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Greg?
Yes.
I say yes. Okay. Okay, so the public uh testimony is closed, uh so now to the board, uh we need to make.
Brian, can you remind me what we're looking for, please?
Yes, it's a special permit under Article six, section one ninety, thirty-two G.
You gotta go slow, kid.
Sorry, special permit. Under Article six, section one ninety dash thirty-two, uh thirty-two G two. Of the bylaw to convert a single-family dwelling into a four-family dwelling. And approve, and approval of the site plan that was submitted. Again, there are, there are. You you covered this, I think, in the opening hearing, but. You know, there are conditions that the dwellings on thirteen thousand square feet.
Thank you.
Minimum of thirty-five hundred.
We, that met all the. That would be our findings, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we found that it met all the criteria.
Yeah, minimum floor area. Yeah, there's basically three. Quantifiable numbers, right, that it meets, and I think you demonstrated that in in the testimony and the plans you presented, and then we have to. Um make this finding and grant the special permit approval. Yep.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the special permit. Uh from the Wakefield zoning bylaws, Article six, section one ninety dash thirty-two G two. To convert the existing property to a four-family. Based on our findings that it had met through the, I don't know. Numbers of hearings that we've had, that it meets all the criteria for uh that conversion. Uh along with the conditions that we uh just spoke about and amended uh during this meeting.
Uh can I get a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Any discussion? All right, so voting members on this will be myself, Jim, Chip. Joe and Tom. I think we're all attendants. Um, all in favor?
Hi.
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 And I vote yes, so that is unanimous. And so what I'm gonna do is stamp, Gail, you're.
Excuse me.
This, the the landscape plan we got, I'm gonna stamp final, but if you end up modifying this to accommodate trash, we'll need an update. Okay? But the one you presented tonight, I'm gonna stamp as the final because it is as of this.
We're gonna, we'll update that. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
And then the site plan with the rev of ten twenty-three. Again, as Chip referenced, I'm just gonna stamp that one as final. And again, we'll need the larger hard copies too, Brian, as always, for the record. All I have is the eight and a half by eleven that get printed from the emails.
Yeah.
So. Um, and I can, but I just wanna stamp these in the file.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, and then the materials list. We believe it's final, you're just gonna update the date stamp basically, right, so. But as presented, it does represent the the final set of materials, so I'll stamp that as well. Okay, I think we are done. Uh Micah, can you contact Paul Finocchio and uh Jim Emanuel to get them update that plan, please?
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
All right, welcome. Good luck.
Appreciate your time. Thank you. Have a good night.
We are now going to our next continued hearing. Twenty dash nineteen, David J. Ladner, trustee at twenty-five to twenty-nine Tuttle Street, Unit Three. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dave Ladner, and there he is. Hi, Dave, it's Charlie on two, our sign guy.
Yeah, I'm here.
Hey, Charlie, how are you?
Good. How you doing, Brian?
Good, I'm doing good. So this is gonna be, this is a good one for me cuz I can just get out of the way. Um because um what's happened here is uh thanks once again to uh um Mr. McBane because him and Dave. After our last meeting, went back to the drawing board with Charlie and thanks, thank you to Charlie and um. I think um, you know, just a great working effort and I think that uh they've come up with um. Uh what works for the property in in everybody's mind, so I think I'm gonna, if it's okay, just for time efficiency, Jim, do you mind um? Kind of telling your board, the board your thoughts on this cuz I know they're looking for your recommendation and not mine.
All right, have you got the other?
I do.
Other piece, wanna bring that one up first and then bring this one up afterwards?
I can do that. Yep.
So as everybody might remember, on the track side, Dave wanted to do a backlit sign. And uh um it was denied basically by the board, so we went back. To discuss um other sorts of signs and we end up basically with a halo sign. Um on the track side and a regular sign. On the Tuttle Street side. So this shows you what the halo would be, basically, which there'll be LEDs in behind the lettering. To on, this would be on the track side. And I said to, as I've said to Dave, I says, this only wants to be lit at night. It wants to, basically. The signs on either side of the building should look the same, except that the way the sign on the track side lit would be halo lit, which would be. Uh LEDs in the letters, basically, but only lit um while the business is opening and only at the time when they. Um when it's dark enough, basically, to utilize it. So we'll have to start, talk about setting time and what do we go forward with here. We didn't get into that. Um so the object here is to give him a little more presence on the track side. He doesn't feel he needs as much presence on the, on the tunnel side. And so my recommendation on the Tuttle Street side would, although not shown in this. Yeah, that they have uh. Is that they have a goose lighting system as part of that. Also, that um. The uh on the, on the uh. Tuttle Street, on the Tuttle Street side, that there'd be a bracketed sign. Now, um there's a misnomer here in in the addresses on this proposal. And that is that Dave's location for RE/MAX is twenty-five, so whatever we decide here. Cannot address twenty-nine. Twenty-nine's the barber shop. We don't wanna give him any relief at all. He needs to come to us. Um and on top of that, um I've looked at the regulations basically for. Uh this side of town and calculated basically what the barber shop has now for a sign. And th- these new signs, and they're all in compliance as far as the building is concerned. Um as a, as a building, cuz what you do is you look at the frontage, basically, of the building against uh the businesses. So at this point, I'm fine with what's being proposed here. Uh there are two stipulations here that we, that we have to address. One, of course, is the signage on the. Track side and the other one is if, in fact, the projecting bracket sign sticks over. Onto the private way, then we need to to grant a relief from that. But given it's high enough. But given it's high enough, I don't see it as an issue, basically. Um, as far as distance and like, and I think there's some planting there, so it may be a foot sticking over the public way or something like that. Other than that, I'm fine with this, uh, this design as, as it's presented.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
I should, I should mention one other thing is that is, and we do this always, basically, is that the. The LED lighting should be a warm lighting and not, uh, not blue light or something like that. Should be, um, twenty-seven to thirty-three Calvin, uh, or within that range, basically. That's about it.
Okay, so. So, couple comments, I'm, I'm gonna ask Charlie or, or perhaps Dave to go through the sign package, cause. I still wanna understand why we appear to have. Signs that say backlit signs and, and other things, so. Perhaps you can take it one sign at a time and make sure we're all clear on what exactly this updated proposal is, and I don't see a date on it. I mean, there should be a date on this, so we know it is actually different than before, and we can reference it in any potential decision, so. So, let's say one at a time, let's start with Tuttle Street side. Did it change from last time, whether or not it did, can you just describe what kind of sign you're looking for there, just? Maybe we're okay, but just take us through each one, please.
Um, is Charlie, Charlie, you want me to say?
Go ahead, Charlie.
Okay, um, on the Tuttle Street side, it's, it's a backlit. Um, which is, is raised letters off the cabinet, which is non, does not light. The cabinet is what you see on the Tuttle Street side. Um, and the letters are basically mounted, like you see on the diagram, installation of backlit sign, um, below. Um, and the, the only thing lighting is the back of the letter, which is. I, I gave you an example on the LEDs, and there are examples above that show backlit signs. So, the only thing lighting on these signs at night would be the, the halo, would be a halo effect. Um, and you have to raise the letter off the cabinet a bit to create that. Um, the, the cabinet itself is made of aluminum. About four inches thick, which houses, um, the transformer and electronics in it. Um, he didn't want, you know, raised letters, uh, raised letters separately on the building, because then there'd be. All individual holes in the building, so what we came up with is, um, the cabinet to put, uh, these letters on. And then one, one, uh, feed through the side into the building. And then, and all the equipment, all the transformers are within the cabinet itself, which is aluminum, oh, eight oh aluminum.
So, so is it correct to call this the installation of the halo lit sign, not a backlit sign, correct?
Halo lit sign, yes.
So, can we change the title to halo lit?
Yes, uh, yes, we can, yeah, not a problem.
Okay, and what?
I think that's, and this is not on the Tuttle Street side, this is on the railroad track side.
This is on the railroad track, yes, I'm sorry, this is on the railroad street side, exactly.
Right, so that needs to be on here too somewhere, which it isn't.
Okay.
Well, it says back, it says back entrance.
Uh, back entrance, yeah.
Right, right here, Chip. Oh, okay.
But I'm looking at the installation of the halo lit sign. Okay, so.
Right up here.
I see, so you guys, so you're, okay. Back entrance, again, it's backlit, it needs to be halo, halo.
Uh, halo lit, yeah, I apologize, yeah.
That's gonna, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I, and, and, and moving to the front, um, those letters.
Sorry, Charlie, what is this white panel, it's very white, is it just a plain white aluminum? It's not being lit in any way, it's just catching the light from the back of the letters.
Yes, yes, this is not a box light sign, this does not light, this panel does not light up, that panel is gonna be aluminum.
And what's the balloon?
The balloon is gonna be the, uh, cabinet, well, the raised letter is gonna be halo lit also. It's got all those letters, all those letters will be halo lit.
Including Remax on the balloon.
Yes.
Yes.
And, and behind the red?
The balloon is, the, the balloon is halo lit.
The balloon is halo lit, it's gonna be a flat, flat, uh, uh, letter. You know, it's gonna be a flat, a flat house, a cabinet, it's gonna be all aluminum faced, so there's nothing that's gonna light on the front. It's not, it's not plexi faced, it's not, uh, front lit, anything like that.
All the letters, all the letters he's got, including the balloon, basically, are aluminum letters painted. And then backlit with, with a halo light.
Right.
And backlight, I, I, yes, you're right, the backlit term we use would be used with a cabinet, that's not the intent here.
Okay, but nowhere, where on this plan does it say that that balloon is going to be halo lit?
Uh, it's, well, basically, it's, it's, um. It's, it doesn't say on there.
Exactly, that's my point, that's my point, I'm sorry. We need the details, we need to know what we're getting, we need to know what we're getting, sorry. So, really, we need to clean up this site plan, so we clean up this, this term backlit, cause that's wrong. And it should say that all the, all the letters, including that balloon, will be halo lit, it doesn't say it anywhere, so. Okay?
Up above, it kinda says halo letter on panel. And I mean, that means all of them. That's the whole thing's halo lit. I'm not gonna light up the Remax Harmony and then not light up the balloon too, or halo light, not halo light the balloon. I'm halo lighting all the copy on there and all the graphics, the only thing that's not lighting on this whole thing is the cabinet itself. Everything's mounted to the cabinet, cause he doesn't want it up.
Yeah, why don't you just put a note on the plan, just, uh, stating exactly what you just said?
Okay.
Right, Dave?
No, I apolog, I apologize, I did, yes, I didn't.
Get, get rid of the backlit term, make it halo, and just put a note on the plan, explaining exactly what's gonna happen with that sign.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Follow through with this, with the second sheet as well, because that describes it even more.
Okay, yeah, exactly.
Alright, thank you, so if you wanna go on to the other one.
Okay, and, uh, Tuttle Street side, um, is basically a, a belt sign. Which is aluminum, aluminum, uh, background, non lit also. Um, and then raised, just raised letters, um, on the sign itself. No halo lit, no nothing, just raised three quarter inch letters, um. PVC, basically, comatex, exterior comatex, um, spr- uh, sprayed and just raised.
Including the balloon.
Including the balloon, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
What I'd like to see is see that lit with, uh, with goosenecks.
Yeah, that'll be, well, that, that depends, I don't, I don't install the goosenecks, I don't do that, so he would have to. Uh, hire a contract, electrical contractor to do that, but, um, yeah, I would say gooseneck it, yeah, yeah.
Well, if, if, if that's what he's willing to do and wants to do. To light that sign, then we just need to see it on a plane, even if you don't do it, it might be another contractor, but. If we were to approve a, a sign plan as part of this, we just need to know what we're getting.
Okay.
And we're not trying to give you a hard time, believe me, it's, we've seen things go sideways. And not just.
No, no.
But things don't end up the way we think they're gonna be, and it's be, part of that ends up being because we didn't get proper detail on a plan, and it just doesn't.
I ag, I agree, absolutely.
Alright, thank you for your understanding. Alright, and then, is there a bracket, any changes from before, or any questions there?
No, the brackets, the brackets, uh, same as we did, we proposed before. Four foot arm. Uh, it's, uh, it's eight sixteen inch plate, quarter inch plate. Uh, welded, uh, swings at the top. And the balloon is, the balloon is the same, it's a three quarter inch, um. Cabinet, same thing. Aluminum cabinet.
Are there details, I don't see it on either page where it has those details on the. It has the dimensions of the bracket, but. The sign, let's see.
Sign is thirty by twenty.
Right, but the thickness, the thickness of that, you know, um. Material, like in the bottom ones, he's got little details, right, in small text, um. Right, but there are goosenecks, there are lights shown on that, so maybe for consistency, the ones over that sign could be similar, potentially, they kinda tie in. You know? Again, for the applicant to decide, but I just, we'd like, I think we'd all like to just make sure. It ends up on the final plan, alright, any, uh, anything else, board members?
I question, uh, quick question, this halo sign, is there a sample that we could see, like somewhere else in town, or is this something new?
You know, well, I can answer that, you know who has it, it's the storage facility, right, Jim?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, Brian, pull up that first sheet.
There you go, hold on. There you go.
Lettering down below is halo lit.
Oh, alright.
Uh, and Jim, uh, Dave Ladner's on here, Dave, you, you would desire to do goosenecks on Tuttle Street, right?
Yes, and I, I do wanna just take a quick moment in addition, just to, uh, thank Jim very much, I mean. And really, I'm, I'm very impressed by this whole board, uh, the amount of time that you all take, uh, just sitting on, I think this is my. This is my third call now with you, Brian, on this?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's the third, yeah.
So, I mean, and I've been on, you know, towards the end of the list on each night, so I've watched several hours at this point. Not pertaining to this, to my case, but I appreciate, really, I mean that. Very impressed by the level of attention to detail, how much time you all put into this, so. Um, but I specifically wanna thank Jim, uh, he's put in a lot of time, he's come down, he met, he's met with me here at my office multiple times. And I truly believe, after having now kind of, uh, learned about how this process works. That he truly does have. The best intentions of not only the town, but I feel like he is trying to help me. Find what, wh- you know, what worked for the town and what was, uh, something that I could be happy with too. And, and that's not an easy thing to do, and I give him a lot of credit, so thank you, Jim.
You're welcome. So, the only, the only thing I would add to this besides the, the, uh, goosenecks. Is that we have, uh, set a time when this thing is on off, so it should be on a timer. Maybe a photo sign or something like that. Um, would be important, but also that the lighting, uh, not, if you look at this, if you look at the, uh, the images. In front of us, basically, I don't wanna see this thing glow like the far right, it should be more like the far bottom left. Where it's more of a warm color as opposed to a blue, you know, blue color, basically. So, that's, that's what is, uh, the Calvin location, basically, as far as color. So, it's more like, it's more like a, uh, incandescent lamp color. Than anything else, basically, a scaldium or something like that, so.
So, that's the twenty-seven hundred to thirty-three, isn't it, Jim?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, and they have, but see, the LEDs come in cold, uh, cool and, and warm. So, I, I'm not sure that they actually classify it by Calvin, but when you use the LEDs, it should be the warm range that they have.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, and we've done it even with a lot of the goosenecks you see around town. We've, we've, um, looked for that temperature range, just again, to create that, put a softer look, and so again, it's just. It's consistent with what we've done on all the projects, and I think that's a good look, alright, so. I've got, okay, go ahead.
I don't understand. With the talk of goosenecks on one side. And the talk last time of wanting to keep the feel of a historic building. Why do we need this backlit again, I, 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 I've been trying to get this in, but. Since. But it seems like everyone else is going in a different direction, I, it's, it's a light at time, why can't they be goosenecks on both sides, it seems to fit more of the. Tone of the building, if I'm the only one who cares about that, that we could just move on, but it, if we're okay with goosenecks on one side, why not the other? And, and in my mind, it keeps more of the feel of the building, like we were talking about last time anyways. If everyone else disagrees, it looks like Dave disagrees at night, then we can move on.
Well, I, I think the, uh, what, Charlie from Vital Signs. Um, I think the halo has more of an impact, and he wants that impact at night. Um, whereas, whereas the gooseneck is, uh, fits the, the front a little more. Um, of a more historical look, cause he doesn't need that impact really on Tuttle, he needs that impact on North Ave though. And that, that would really impact, basically, he, it would be the look he, he's trying to, you know, achieve there.
I agree with you, Greg. I. I don't have much more to say than that, I, I know what he wants, um. You know, I, uh. I, I just think, we were trying to get away from lighted. And this is still lighted to me, now it just glows instead of having a lighted sign, but. Um, I also defer to Jim, cause he's, he, this is his gig, he knows how to, um. Parse these proposals.
Well, I, I don't disagree with where you're both coming from, I just know that we have done this elsewhere. And this is not in the overlay district, at least not yet, and it will be eventually, basically, but we've done this elsewhere, and I. And unfortunately, this building has been stripped of its architectural character in a lot of, a lot of ways, cause there would have been a roof around this and a bunch of other things, so. You know, sort of tipping your hat to one side, which is on the street side, which is more at a pedestrian level. And understanding that, that's not a pedestrian level on the other side, it's, it's addressing itself to the, to the street traffic, basically, on the other side. So, it's sort of a little bit different, and the, the reason I had brought this up a while back. Before we got to backlighting, basically, was I figured that we've already done something with backlighting elsewhere in town. Um, and it seemed that it would give at least more recognition for, for this particular business, this location. Um, could it be, um, you know, just a, just a, uh, gooseneck, sure, it could be. But I'm looking at this, at saying, you gotta, you're trying to get some distance here. Uh, to the street level, basically, and it, and it, think about it this way, it's not lit this way very often. It's only lit for a few hours during, during the evening or afternoon, depending on whether it's winter or summer. So, he's not gonna be in his office, maybe at nine o'clock at night in the middle of the summer, so, you know, the sign's gonna look just like the front. Um, it's just gonna be in the winter at, at those times, or the like, so I'm not looking at this being so, so predominant. It, it only, it only is predominant for a certain narrow bit of time. The rest of the day, ninety-nine percent of the day, it's looking just like the other sign.
So, me.
Well.
So, Jim, are we putting time constraints on that then, for him to have it on and off?
Yeah, 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 it should be, there should be a timer on it, and that's, we can discuss what that, it, what that duration is.
Dust, dust, dust to nine P M.
Yeah.
Cause I can't imagine the office is gonna be open beyond nine. But if he's only there till six, it still gives him three hours of, you know. So, you can set these timers that are on eyes, dusk till whenever, so I would suggest dusk to nine P M. Unless he's gonna have office hours till eleven.
He's there now, I guess, so.
I just said that, I'm here now.
So, my, my only question is, uh, you guys referenced the, the, the type of lighting. Would this have any impact on those units that are on, I guess I'm gonna age myself here, the old, uh, triple A site. Behind the Dunkin' Donuts on the other side, cause they're raised up over the Dunkin' Donuts. You know which units I'm talking about, this residential units that?
Yeah, the ones that are sort of in between.
Oh, yeah, no, these are, I mean, it's just a little glow, it's not.
Okay.
That's, the backlit, yes, would be, but the halo, no.
Okay.
I mean, they got, you got more light coming off Dunkin' Donut than you are off this thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Alright, Brian, do you wanna just run down the punch list again real quick, just to make sure we're in sync?
Um, yeah.
So. Assuming you were taking copious notes. I do, so Charlie, Charlie's got to clean up the plan, Charlie, why don't you send me a draft, and then, you know, and then I'll fine tune it with the chair.
Uh, okay.
Don't forget to put a date on it, put today's date on it, with the note exactly how everything's going to work. And getting rid of the backlit, the halo, that, that we discussed. Uh, also, Charlie, can you put, put a note on there that, on the halo, it's going to be, uh, a warm range for the bulb?
Yeah.
So, we don't have to deal with that in the condition.
Warm range, twenty-seven hundred to thirty-three hundred.
Calvin.
Calvin.
And then.
Thirty-three, thirty-four, yeah, I should have said that right.
Jim, is there a number, is there a number of goosnecks that are going to be allowed in the, uh, on that sign, or, or, um?
I think the only, the, I would say it's two to three.
Okay.
And that's all that's needed.
Yep, so Charlie, can you put a note on the plan, even though you're not going to do the install, to just put, uh, note, two to three gooseneck lights allowed on Tuttle Street sign?
Yep.
Okay. Because then, as, as the board likes it, it's all in a plan, we don't have to deal with conditions. Um, and then, a condition would be that it's going to be, um, could it be dawn to dusk or at closing, if later than dusk? What, what's this?
Dust, dust to closing.
Thank you. Dust to closing, okay.
Charlie, Jim McBane, um, is there any way of making that cabinet thinner than four inches?
Wha- what's that, I'm sorry?
Any way of making the cabinet less than four inches?
Um. No, like, they, they relatively come around four. I mean, uh, because the transformer's in there and all that, it, it's about four, yeah, it's about four, Jim. I don't think I can make it any smaller than that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I, that's about the bare minimum I can do, it's four inches.
Okay, anything else, board members? Okay. We'll open up the public testimony, if there's any member of the public here, who wishes to ask a question or make a comment, please raise your hand in Zoom, or in, uh, the buttons at the bottom of your screen. Not seeing any going once, going twice, alright, we'll close it to public testimony.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Do you see some way that we can approve this tonight to let Dave get going on getting these signs made? Um, where we kind of are all in agreement is what's going to happen, we're just kind of dotting i's and crossing t's for paperwork. Um, I'd hate to have to have him wait till November eighteenth for a vote. Uh, if that's what has to happen, has to happen, but. I ask if you think there's a way we can do it tonight.
I personally think we can, I would want clarification, again, that the, the request is for a variance. Um, according to one ninety-eighty G, but Jim, you raised two points earlier, again, about. The specific relief we need to consider here, right?
There's two items, basically.
Okay.
One, and, one, and, one deals with the track side, which is one ninety dash seventy-seven B, uh, two B.
Okay. My binder tipped over, one ninety seventy-seven.
One ninety, one ninety dash seventy-seven B, two B.
And what's that referring to, Jim?
That's the, that's allowing for the, the sign to be on the track side.
Okay.
Because you can only have them.
Yeah.
You can only have them on a street side or a parking lot side.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, so they, we need to, we would need to vary that to allow both signs to begin with, okay, and then.
And the other one has to do with, um, with signs projecting over a public way. Now, I, I, I believe this is close, but not having measured it in light there, I think that they should, they should ask for it. Which is one ninety dash seventy-seven D one.
D, D as in David, one?
Yes, D one.
No sign projecting over the public right away.
Yes.
Some within three feet of the curb line.
Right.
Is that a D as in David or B as in boy?
D, D as in David.
Thank you.
And the other point I should make is. This filing is for signage on twenty-five Tuttle, not twenty-five and twenty-nine.
I think you made yourself clear on that point.
Well, just to make sure it. Twenty-nine comes.
I know, I know, we've heard it, we got you.
Alright, I, I tried to keep it short and sweet.
Your passion shows, my friend.
Okay, Brian, Brian, you. You good with that? I get everything, yep. Well, I mean, is there any other paragraph or relief you think? No. Did it play here, or do you think, Jim, I mean? I work with Jim, yeah.
No, every, I've gone through all the square footages, the frontages, I went down there and scaled the things off and like, so, these are the only two I can find.
Yeah. Alright, if there's nothing else.
So, so did it need two variances or just one variance mentioning both?
Just one, giving relief from both.
Okay.
To allow the signs to be constructed on the plan that Charlie's going to finalize, and, and, and Dave will review it.
Dave and Jim?
Yeah. Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. Due to the presentation this evening, that we allow yourself and Jim. To review the paperwork that finally comes through for the signed package. That it has the date, the proper information. The wording changes that we talked about this evening come through, and if it does, then that we grant a variance. Based on one ninety dash seventy-seven two C, allowing the side, the sign. To be placed on the track side of the building, either track side or backside, however you want to call it. And one, uh. Also, one ninety dash seventy-seven D one pertaining to the bracket sign, if it should. Uh, when all is said and done. Come over the public way.
Okay, um.
And that the sign being lit will only be lit from dusk to closing, uh, on all lights.
Yep, got it, I think the rest was going to be on the plan, but that was, that was the condition, got it.
Yeah, and that, and that should state on the plan that the lights will be a warm flavor from twenty-seven to thirty-three, thirty-three hundred Kelvin. But that should be on the plan as well.
Okay, that's your motion?
That's my motion.
Anyone want to second it?
Second.
Who was that?
Joe, uh, second.
Oh, Joe, thank you. Any discussion?
I'll pass.
You're passing, okay. So then, voting members would be. Myself, Chip, Joe, Tom, and Greg. All in favor?
Yes.
Hi.
Yeah.
Joe, yeah. Greg?
Yeah, yes.
And I vote yes, so. Alright, that's unanimous. Variance granted, we'll just look for that updated plan and make sure it's got all the changes we discussed, and we'll get it filed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, good luck to you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Alright, now we're on to new hearings. Twenty-one dash twenty-one, Matthew D Husky and Brooke A Husky at thirty-two, twenty-three Lake Street. Hey, Brian, welcome back. I'm back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, bye.
And welcome, welcome applicants. Great. Just bear with me. I'm going to bring this up. Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, for the record, attorney Brian McGrail, representing, uh, Matthew and Brooke Husky. Uh, owners of property at twenty-three Lake Street. Oh, hey, guys, how are you? Good to see you, they waited the whole night, so, uh, Peter Sandus is involved, uh, with this, uh, matter, and, uh, the Huskies own. Um, a, a single family home on Lake Street, and what they're seeking is, they are seeking a, uh, a finding under section one ninety dash fifty. To allow a front porch, uh, addition, uh, to go on to their, uh, on their house, and I'm going to bring it up on the screen. I can figure this out. There we go. Great, you guys see that? Great. Okay, so, um, this is, so that, that's kind of the, that's the rendering of what it's going to look like. There we go. There you go. And this is a site plan, which is, which is relevant to the board, that was done by, uh, Paul Finocchio. Zoom in, please. Yeah, there we go. Oh, there we go, okay. Is that better, Dave, a little more? Little more, yeah. That better? Yep, I think we're going to want to see that zoning table, so. That better? Is that okay? Better for me, how about the older folks? Well, I went out, hold on. Jeez, there you go. It is getting late, alright, perfect. There you go, okay, great. So, um, basically, um, and, and I went over this with the chair, I corresponded with, with Tom Mullin. Um, and, um, town council Tom Mullin in the, in the chair today, uh, because this is somewhat unique. Um, what we're doing is, i- as you see, um, the current front, let, let me go through the zoning table, the, the area requirement in this general residence district, even though it's a single family house. Is eight thousand square feet, uh, the Huskies meet that requirement, they have ninety-eight seventy-three. Uh, the frontage is an eighty-foot requirement, uh, they, they have seventy-two point five, and they're not affecting that. Uh, on the setbacks, the front setback requirement in the general residence district is fifteen feet. It's existing at, um, eleven point six. And what they, uh, are asking for is to go to three, okay? So, basically, it already doesn't comply, and they want to go closer, because they want to put this front porch addition on. On the side, the current requirement is ten, they're at nine point six, as you can see. But when the porch goes on, they're going to go down to nine point four. On the other side, they meet the requirement, ten thirty-six six, it's going to stay the same. The rear is obviously not an issue, twenty feet, ninety-nine, and ninety-nine stays the same. Open space requirements are met, lock coverage requirements are met, height is met, and stories is met. So, really, the only deficiencies that they have are the front setback. And the right side setback, they, those setbacks already don't conform, and they're going closer. Traditionally, when the board looked at applications like this, it's, you know, the obvious, um, thing you would say is, well, they need a variance, because they don't meet the setback requirement, and they're going closer. Um, what's happened is, there's a recent case that, uh, came down from the Massachusetts, uh, Supreme Court, it's called Bilal to V Brookline. And what that case said is that if you have an existing non-conforming feature to your house, single or two-family. You can go, you can increase that non-conforming feature by a finding by your board. You no longer need a variance for that. So, because they already don't meet the front yard setback, they can go closer. To that front yard without getting a variance, and the same thing for the side yard. As long as your board makes a finding that what is happening is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. The second prong, uh, not the first prong, you have to take it to that level to make that finding. So, it's really a, a unique case, um, and it's a, it really affords a, a unique opportunity for non-conforming, um, single and two-family dwellings, and. You know, i- it is the law of the land, the highest court has ruled that, you know, a lot of people say, well, gee, it's not really fair, because if you have a, a totally conforming property. And you want to go closer, you need a variance, and, and folks that have non-conforming properties are afforded to, to go closer with just a finding. Um, I want to point out, with a, with a Husky's property, obviously meets this setback of ten feet, very, you know, very easily. If they were putting an addition on, in a conforming area, and wanted to make that non-conforming, they would need a variance. So, it's only really the features that relate to already existing non-conformities, that you can increase them now by a finding and not need a variance. So, with that said, I think not only is what the Huskies, um, seeking very tasteful, uh, for their property. And we had Paul put a little, uh, you'll note that we had Paul take a look at the house next door. Um, just to kind of give the board a reference of, you know, those folks at twenty-one have a front porch that's five point four feet, so it's pretty consistent. The Huskies is on a little bit of angle, because that's the way their house sits on the lot. So, I think not only is it very tasteful, um, and, you know, I, I don't think it's not only substantially not more detrimental to the neighborhood. But I think actually what they're doing is really beneficial to their property and to the neighborhood. Um, so we would request that, um, you could respectfully, uh, suggest that you can make that requested finding on this rather, rather easily. Okay, thanks, Brian, for that explanation and background, and I can forward that. That, uh, case, if anyone does want to just have it in their back pocket, but, uh, it, it seems straightforward enough, um. To me, and, uh, again, I would agree, it's a tasteful addition, it seems reasonable, and, uh, I have no issues with it, do any other board members have comments or questions?
Yeah.
Do we, do we have the same finding as we normally do, that it's not more detrimental, and if we find that it is, you know, do we belt and suspender it, or what is the finding that we actually have to find?
No, so normally, Chip, you would make a finding that it's, it's not, it doesn't intensify the non-conformity, and, you know, even if it did, it would not be substantially more detrimental.
Right.
That's not substantially more detrimental is like the, is the suspenders, if you will. On these, you have to go right to the suspenders, you, you, because, because you are increasing the non-conformity, so.
Okay, so that, so that we find that it is increasing the non-conformity, however, we are also finding that it is not. More detrimental to the neighborhood.
Yeah. Substantially, is. Not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
I, I. I, I make Mr. McGrail take substantially and somewhat out of all his decisions.
On conditions, on conditions, yeah.
Which he did a nice job of tonight, by the way.
I should, I should note, unlike the last one of these we had, um, this street here, it varies, the porch is very in and out along the whole street. And, and there are some other ones that are fairly tight to the sidewalk as well, so it does fit in, uh, basically with the character of the street.
Yeah, I was just going to add that I, I lived on that street, and just what Jim said, it's very consistent with a lot of the properties on that street.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Uh, if nothing else, we'll open it up to public testimony. There aren't too many members of the public, it appears, left, but there could be a couple. Anyone has a comment or question, please raise your hands, we'll entertain that at this time.
Yeah.
Seeing none, uh, we'll close it to public testimony. Uh, the Huskies haven't spoken, I mean, is there anything you'd like to add before we perhaps close this? Um, I know, they've done a lot of the talking for you, but, uh, again, it's pretty straightforward, but if there's anything you'd like to add, you can certainly do that.
Sorry, the, the neighbor to the right of us on the picture, she was on, and I think she didn't realize she was unmuted, and she clicked the mute button when she tried to talk.
Is that Anne?
That was Anne, yeah.
Oh, Anne, you want to speak?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay.
Good.
My apologies.
I'll work this.
Alright, well, we're seeing the top of your head, maybe, maybe move your camera down, so we can see, see your face.
Anne, unmute.
There you are, go ahead, Anne.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, we just only seen about half of your head.
Okay, I have no problem whatsoever with this. It fits with the neighborhood and it will be a wonderful addition. I'm just computer illiterate. Just bear with me.
You're not doing that bad.
No, I'm trying. Brian, you know me.
Yeah, Anne, you're computer illiterate, I'm just illiterate.
No problem whatsoever, and none of the neighbors have any problem whatsoever. And I still don't know how to unmute this thing, Matthew, when you even showed me. But anyhow, I hope they get their porch. If not, they can use my porch.
Thank you, Anne.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell.
Yeah, we just, we love the neighborhood and, you know, we, we always kind of wish we had one, like the rest of our neighbors, because we love walking by and talking to our neighbors when they're sitting out there. So that's what we want to do too. Let's be a part of the neighborhood.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Back to the board, any final comments, questions? If not, I think a motion might be in order.
Brian, can you scroll to where the tab is on these drawings?
Oh, sure, Mr. Tom. So you got.
Or just tell me who did them and the date.
Phoenix, Phoenix Architect.
Oh, okay.
And the date on this is nine one twenty on that plan. And then Paul Finocchio's plan is dated August thirty one, two thousand twenty. PGF and Associates.
Okay. Mister, yeah, just leave that up. Mister Chair, if I may, I move that we find that in this case, the front porch as presented in the site plan by Paul Finocchio dated eight thirty one, two thousand twenty, and the architectural design presented by Peter Sandors dated nine one twenty is presented to us tonight. I do increase the non-conformity. However, in the increase of the non-conformity, we do not find that it is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So I move that we find in favor of allowing them to build this porch.
Second.
Thank you, Joe. Any discussion? Alright, so regular voting members again, and we'll go back around.
I recuse myself.
You can't, you made the motion.
Sorry, guys.
I don't think Michael's had a vote tonight, so why don't we give Michael a chance? So Dave, Jim, Chip, Joe, and Michael, so Chip?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
I vote yes, so that is unanimous. So you have your finding. Brian knows the procedure, we'll get it, we'll get a decision written, and once it gets through the appeal period, you can apply for your building permit and build your porch and make the nomination.
Yep, thank you. Do you know how long that lasts for?
How long can you build, or what's the? Does the permit expire?
How soon do we need to file for a permit?
One year.
One year.
One year, thank you. And you're gonna mark that, it's one year, one year, because otherwise you could lose the variance, but I can, you can ask the board to extend it.
Brian, it's not a variance.
Oh, geez, hold on, gee, you know, how's that? Thank you. Yeah, yeah, so that's a difference, yeah, the findings don't expire, there's no expiration on it. Yeah. So.
Well, we assume you're gonna want to get it done, so.
Yeah, we do.
Get it done for Christmas. Get it done for Christmas. Tree out there.
Yeah.
Alright, well, good luck and appreciate your patience tonight. Again, we typically do our continued hearings till we get to the new one, so. Hopefully you were entertained or informed, listening to some of the other testimonies, so, thanks.
Thank you, Russ, good night.
Thanks.
Good night.
Bye.
Alright, board members, moving right along. Okay, we are now on to other matters. So we have three that I show on my agenda, and then we'll hear if there's anything else that has come up since the agenda was published. So going back to case twenty one, twenty dash one and twenty dash two, at twenty eight Redfield Road, Caramede, request for an extension.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, here on behalf of Caram, Caramede, and this is, this was a variance that was granted about a year ago, and we're just looking to extend the variance with COVID and everything going on, it just has not gone forward yet. I spoke to Town Council about this today, that, you know, currently all permits are told pursuant to Mass Generalize Chapter fifty three, the Acts of two thousand twenty, which was enacted but because of COVID, that basically prevented any permits from lapsing. But, but what that statute provides, it's interesting, it doesn't give any buffer. So like most will say, yeah, permit, things don't lapse, but they do forty five days after the state of emergency ends. With the permits, it, it tolls or extends them, but it gives no buffer. So the day that the, that the governor pulls the plug, hopefully soon, whenever, when, when the, when the pandemic is over, then, you know, you, you're vulnerable. Perhaps they're gonna amend that because it kind of doesn't make sense, but in any event, what I'm requesting for is, and this was language that, that Tom had suggested, an extension for the longest, longest possible not to exceed six months after the expiration, after, after the expiration of the extension or tolling pursuant to Chapter fifty three of the Acts of two thousand twenty. Because normally you would extend it six months. So we're asking that it would be, it would be extended to the, to long as possible not to exceed month, six months after the expiration of the tolling pursuant to Chapter fifty three of the Acts of two thousand twenty.
Okay, any comments, board members?
Sounds reasonable.
Okay.
Okay.
You need us to make a motion and grant that, so.
I make a motion that we grant exactly what Mr. Mullen said we should as extending to Caramede.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Alright, regular voting members and Tom. Yep.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay. Alright, and we have another one, similarly, case, case eighteen dash thirty six and eighteen dash thirty seven, seven Glendale Ave, Janet and Henry Gregorio.
Yeah, so these are two, these were two variances that were granted in this case. This is up in Wildwood, the house that will be built up there. Same thing, sadly, Henry has passed, so it's only Jan now, and I'm requesting an extension on the time to exercise those variances. And again, to the longest extent possible, not to exceed six months after the expiration of, after the expiration of the extension or tolling pursuant to Chapter fifty three of the Acts of two thousand twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, same voting members, Chip?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
Tom?
Yep.
And I vote yes, okay. So you have those two extensions?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Brian, I think that's the end of the agenda for your participation, unless there's something else we haven't that has come up within the last forty eight hours and isn't on our agenda?
Nope, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Alright, have a good night.
You too, thank you, appreciate it.
Last but not least, we have a request for an administrative approval for T-Mobile Northeast at four fourteen Main Street. And is, let's see, of course I have the letters. Just, sorry, I gotta. Is it Ms. White?
Yes.
Yes. Welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you again for your patience.
No problem.
Yeah, still awake, that's nice job.
On her T-Mobile phone, I'm sure, doing interesting things, but.
No, no, on my computer.
Okay. Alright, so. Yeah, whenever you're ready, we, we've seen several of these over the last few years as companies are looking to upgrade their equipment, so if you just want to take us quickly through what you're.
Sure, yeah, it's pretty straightforward, so T-Mobile and Sprint have recently merged, as you've probably heard. This was originally actually a Nextel site, which was then acquired by Sprint, and now it's a T-Mobile slash Sprint site. So we are seeking administrative approval for an eligible facilities request under Act sixty four oh nine of Middle Class Tax Relief Act. We are going to be removing the existing six panel antennas that are within the stealth enclosures on the roof, along with a remote radio head. Henry placing them with nine panel antennas. And there will be fifteen radio heads. All of the modifications will be within the existing enclosures, there's no change to the size of the enclosures. And then they will be connected via coax cable and fiber, and we'll be adding another equipment cabinet down within the existing area in the basement of the building. So there's no physical changes to the enclosures or the visible aspects of the installation. All the changes are gonna take place within the existing enclosures so that there is no expansion of anything outside of what's previously been approved.
Everything is just getting that much smaller these days? Because you're doing fifteen radio heads instead of.
So radio heads are actually quite small, it's the antennas that are generally larger. So the radio has usually can fit right behind the antennas. So, and some of the antennas are smaller, some of them are larger. It all depends on what we're trying to do, but I believe, based on what I saw from the original plans, these boxes were built originally to have more antennas in them. I think the original Nextel installation was larger than the current Sprint installation. So there's space within those boxes so that we are able to fit the three antennas per sector versus the two antennas per sector.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, board members? This is the one downtown on top of the building behind the fiberglass brick facades.
Wakefield Building.
The Wakefield Building, yeah.
Is this being upgraded to five G or is it just being, I saw it's like wooden, right?
It is not, no, there is no five G antenna with installation.
It's just upgraded.
Wave of the future, okay. And be back again someday soon.
I'm sure we will.
Okay. Anything else, board members? Again, this is administrative finding. If you feel they've demonstrated, she's demonstrated that what they're proposing meets the requirements set forth in the, in the regs.
I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay, go for it.
Mister Chairman, I move that we grant.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. I'm just seeing members of the public, just real quick. Is there any member of the public who wishes to ask a comment or question or make a comment? I just see one other phone number, I'm not sure.
That might be Tom's phone number.
Oh, Tom's phone number.
Tom's double dipping.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so there's no public testimony, no, nobody here from the public, okay, sorry, Chip, please proceed.
No problem, I move that we grant administrative review approval to Wedman Associates as the agent for T-Mobile Northeast for the modica, modification of the existing wireless facility on the roof of the building located at four fourteen Main Street, Wakefield. After reviewing all the correspondence, plans and materials provided by the applicant's rep, we find that the replacement of six antennas and addition of three antennas, replacement of one remote radio heads and the addition of one remote radio head, all within the existing stealth enclosure on an existing forty two foot roof rooftop of the existing installation height of sixty two feet, as well as the addition of six new fiber cables and one equipment cabin within the east area in the basement is in accordance with plans entitled Site Number Four BN one 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 six A. Site name Wakefield Center, paired by Advanced Engineering Group B.C., stamped by Scott Adams Civil Engineer and dated ten one twenty, satisfies the standards for an eligible facilities request of an existing wireless tower or and or base station that does not substantially change the physical dimensions of such tower or base station in accordance with forty seven USC fourteen fifty five A.
That is motion.
That is my motion.
And it's been seconded, thank you, Joe. Let's see, regular voting members. And Tom? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And I vote yes, so that is unanimous, so.
Thank you very much.
Alright, I've signed the three copies, Gail, that we needed, one that's gonna go to you, one that, you know, goes in a file, so. This, this file, we'll get back to Gail tomorrow, and you can make arrangements with her to get the copy you need.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Alright, you too, take care. Okay, any other matters, board members?
None.
Clerk and board comments, anything going on, Jim, anything? We have minutes.
We approve the minutes of October fourteenth as written.
Thank you. Any discussion? Alright, all in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yep.
Tom?
Yep.
Mike? Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay, minutes approved. Any other matters?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Good night, guys.
Thanks, thank you, Gail. Take care, everyone, bye bye.